Good morning and welcome to the March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance and I'll ask our General Counsel Mark Silverman to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland. Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu.
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg. Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Master. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
All right, and good morning again and welcome to our public meeting and public hearing today, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. This morning, we will start our meeting with two public meeting items, which are applications for work on designated properties that have already had a public hearing. And then we'll move to our public hearing agenda to look at new applications for work on designated properties. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. If you would like to testify on any of the public hearing items, you may do so by joining the Zoom meeting at the estimated time for that item, which can be found on our public hearing agenda, which can be found on our website. And if you would just like to watch the proceedings, you may do so by going to our YouTube channel. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation Cory Harala to take us through our public meeting and public hearing agendas.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everybody. We'll start today's Preservation Department Agenda with two public meeting items. First is Public Meeting Item Number One, LPC twenty-three dash zero-two-one-eight-one. This is an application for an amendment. It's in the Borough of Manhattan, Block four-four-three, Lot eight, thirty-two Second Avenue in the East Village Lower East Side Historic District. This is a Renaissance Revival-style courthouse building designed by Alfred Hopkins and built in nineteen seventeen to nineteen. And the application is to amend Certificate of Appropriateness twenty dash zero-six-zero-two-four, which was issued and approved to construct rooftop and side yard additions and to install signage. The applicants will present the revisions after we open the proceedings.
Okay, and we'll do that right now, so that can happen seamlessly. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the applicants may begin.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Gustavo, you do have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please note there are, there may be some delays because it's a little bit of a large presentation, so keep that in mind. You may begin. Please state your name for the record before you do so.
Kevin, you might want to start.
Yes, I'll do the introduction here, please. This is Kevin Bone from Bone Levine Architects. Chair Carroll, Commissioners Cory, thank you all for hearing us. A little bit of big picture item here, the anthology through the course of the past few years in the aftermath of the passing of Jonas Mekas. And through the reality of the pandemic and the reality of dramatically rising construction costs, decided to scale back our ambitions for the renovation of the Anthology Film Archives. Fundamentally, what we have done is removed our strategy for adding a fourth-floor library to the building. And we have worked to program the spaces within the building to better use the space we have. You know, this is driven by the limitation of public funding and the reality of what we can make happen there. At this point, I'm gonna hand it over to our senior architect on the project, Gustavo Luk singer. And I thank you all for your considerations on this project for all of these years. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Thank you, Kevin. Good morning, Commissioners. Gustavo Luk singer from Bone Levine Architects. I'm gonna stay for a second on this page. This is essentially a rendering from the northwest corner of the intersection of Second Avenue and Second Street. For the bulk of the presentation, the original approval is on the left side, and then the proposed amendment is on the right side. In, in this street view photo montage, the bulk of the changes concentrate on reducing the scope, the elimination of the fourth floor in a penthouse that was over it. And therefore, most of the alterations are now concentrated in what in what used to be or what is currently an alleyway of the original building. We retain the glass cylinder that is facing Second Avenue. And we also retain the marquee or the sign that provides the theatrical presence and identity of the Anthology Film Archives. Other notable changes along the north facade of the building, along Second Street, the easternmost window bay adopts the original configuration, historical configuration of the building. And then the rest of the three bays remain symmetric on that elevation with the signature keyhole windows that Raymond Abraham designed for the building when it was renovated in the eighties. And then the infill flanking those keyhole windows with the sheet metal cladding are also retained. That's pretty much the most conspicuous element that retains the sheet metal. Other changes, pretty much the store from cylinder remains the same, except that now we have what we call a crown, that it's a a metal mesh masking the top glazing of the cylinder, and it's flanked by opaque construction because of a change on the operation behind the strongfudge, which I will elaborate later on in the in the presentation. So visibility, in this particular slide, the top is the proposed amendment, the bottom is the original approval. The green shading is what we, you know, called as a non-visible area. Everything aligned above that will be minimally visible from the street. We have two vantage points. One immediately on front of the building across the street, and another one, which is the farthest one away, that allows visibility of the rooftop addition. In this case, you know, the minimally visible area is the top of the bulkhead. As you can see in these slides, this is how that vantage point looks from Second Street. The bulkhead was minimally visible on the original approval here on the left side. And it remains approximately the same on the proposed amendment. Along Second Avenue, this is the visibility of that bulkhead. We no longer have that partial visibility of the mechanical equipment that used to be a little bit visible on the original approval. Now, all of the mechanical equipment lies pretty much the roof level on Donage, and it remains concealed behind the marquee, the sign. We were asked to provide different vantage point that was standing more on the sidewalk just to prove that the bulkhead, you know, the visibility of it remains more or less the same, consistent with the original approval. In this case, this photo, the corner building has been demolished, but there's a proposed development on that corner. And so the red line signifies where the corner of that building is. And that's pretty much the last vantage point that allows the rooftop structure to be visible. As you can see here, the bulkhead is very visible. Those are those two vantage points in plan. And here's the result of the proposed amendment. Again, main change of the cylinder is that mesh masking that top portion of it, and then the opaque construction flanking the cylinder. Soning envelope, we're well below the maximum allowed for that zoning lot. We're reducing the floor area by about five thousand square feet. The heights are being reduced by eleven feet and nine feet, respectively, with the bulkhead and the marquee. The scope of the restoration work remains the same. We have not altered that. We're not proposing any amendment to it. This is, you know, the restoration elevations for both. West elevation. The section, originally, the cylinder used to front a multiple-story atrium. Now, the cylinder, it fronts a three-story atrium, and then the top portion conceals an element, a space that communicates the third-floor projection booth with film storage room behind. And that's where, you know, the mesh makes sense to be introduced to conceal a little bit that operation, to make it less conspicuous to the public way. For some reason, this is okay. Sorry. The typical wall section on the left side, the original approval. Obviously, the fourth floor occupies the main roof on the proposed amendment. Now it's only the marquee that occupies that. We that one of the biggest changes by way of the addition of the fourth floor is that now the stormwater runoff need to run off the cornice, unlike the original where it used to run back into the building by way of a scupper. Now that it's retained again, that it's brought back to the configuration. That's a detail of what that means. And then the scope of the restoration of the masonry remains the same. Some details of how the marquee interacts with the parapet. There was a slight reduction on the height of a sign just to account for the lower height in relation to the street level. Handrails pretty much remain the same. This comparison of a cylinder configuration, the profile is pretty much the same, except for the top, which is no longer a multiple-story atrium, houses this kind of logistical area for the anthology. It removes that original approved skylight, and now it's just an opaque surface with a scupper on top of it. And then the main difference in the elevations, the heights pretty much remain the same. It's just the opaque construction flanking the top area of the cylinder, and then the mesh masking the top portion of the glazing. And this is just an appendix page to show a recap of how those changes happen. We pretty much retain the same materials consistently that were approved originally. It's just the bulk of the alteration that changes. The marquee in itself, the armature is coordinated the same way that the original fourth floor was with the bay arrangement of the bay of the windows. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I'm not seeing any questions. So with that, I think we can move to our discussion. Oh, yes, Commissioner Chu, please go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, I might have missed it. But is this signage being lit?
It is.
Okay, and the detail of the light source is below. Is it uplit? Is that how?
It is an indirect light source. It's essentially there's an opaque surface here, and then there's an indirect source of light that creates a glow behind the sign.
Okay, so you're seeing a lit backing, and you're looking through the perforation of the front plate.
Correct.
Okay.
And to follow up on that, the lighting approach, is that the same approach you were using in the original proposal?
That is correct. Yep.
All right, other questions? All right, I don't see any other questions, so I think we'll begin our discussion. And as we've heard, this is a building that was built in nineteen seventeen as a courthouse. It was in nineteen seventy-nine acquired by the Anthology Film Archives and has served as that purpose since then. And I think when we last saw this application, which was for a rooftop addition, the additions to the side, the gap between the two buildings, and then the sign on top, we were, I think, very supportive of the Film Archives and their presence here and recognized that they were part of the layered history of this building. And we approved the proposal as presented on the left, in the view on the left. So the application today is, for a variety of reasons that we've heard, to eliminate the rooftop addition portion of it and to take the sign that was previously approved to be on top of the rooftop addition and lower it, which so now it'll sit on the roof of the main building, and there is some view, as there always was, of the mechanical equipment and bulkheads behind. And then there were some adjustments to the addition and the glazing and the infill piece of the gap between the two buildings. So we have the roof change and then the side change. If we can focus our conversation around those elements, that would be great. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Oh, sure. I I think the work is well done. And for me, I'm the addition is fine. I was worried about the proportions, but after hearing the narrative, I think it's fine. I think the side yard addition works well. And finally, the signage, I can approve. I wish they had showed the night scene to see how that signage work at night. But I can approve this proposition.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yes, I agree. I think certainly we approved the larger addition in the past. I think that this is, obviously, it's much more modest, and I think, you know, still in keeping with the original architecture. Looking at the appendix and the examples that they showed for the mesh and the lighting behind it, without having to see in the nighttime rendering, I think it'll be appropriate. And I think the minimal visibility of the rooftop bulkheads are fine. And I think the change to the sort of the alleyway is appropriate, and I can approve this as presented.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. It's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Chu?
I agree as well. I think it's appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree as well, and I think, you know, it's a good adaptive use of the building. And, you know, I think it actually looks better, though it may not achieve as many of their goals, but I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree. I mean, I think it's appropriate. I think it's actually it's better. I mean, it's tighter, it's much more harmonious with the with the structure. It's not distracting. And the I don't have a problem with the minimal visibility, and of course, I think the news is fantastic.
All right, great, thanks. And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree as well. I think this is much better than the previous version, and it is appropriate.
Okay, all right, so I think we have a consensus to approve. Commissioner Jefferson, oh yes, Commissioner Chu, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I didn't see a view of it, but when I look at the signage piece, it does occur to me that because there is that that dimension between the neighboring taller building, I just wanted to make sure there was some kind of return and not just seeing the end of the sign when I look back from the right side of this view.
Okay, Cory, do you want to maybe, or Abby, if you have the control of the
Is there a view? I don't think, to the right side, I assume there's a return on that that upper piece, so that it doesn't just open up on that.
And Cory, if the staff is here, if they can answer that question.
I mean, it does appear to be a return, and we could also work with them to make adjustments on that further, but I do believe there is a return.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson, would you make the motion to approve?
Sure. In the matter of LPC dash twenty-three dash zero-two-one-eight-one, thirty-two Second Avenue, application is to amend Certificate of Appropriateness twenty dash zero-six-zero-two-four to construct rooftop and side yard addition and to install signage. I note that this style, scale, and material and details of the buildings are among the features that contribute to this special architectural and historical character of the East Village Low East Side Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the construction of the proposed rooftop signage, bulkhead, and mechanical equipment and side yard addition will not eliminate or cause damage to any significant architectural feature of the roof or buildings or building, that the increased visibility of the metal-clad roof, rooftop stair, bulkhead, and the mechanical equipment due to the elimination of the rooftop addition will remain in keeping with a variety of buildings' height and rooftop accretion found within the district and the adjacent streetscape. That the large-scale signage now set directly above the corners of the historic building will not compete with the design, material, and color with the monumental character of the building. That the design material and color patterns of the proposed signage featuring bronze metal mesh with etched lettering hung from a steel parapet will be harmonious with the brick facade of the historic building, that the signs will be cantilevered over the cornice and parapet, and will therefore fully, and therefore fully reversible, and will not obscure or damage any decorative element of the historic building below. The addition of the metal mesh screened third floor at the side yard addition facing Second Avenue will mainly offset from the plane of the historic building and will relate to the proposed material of the adjacent signage. And that the proposed work is supportive of the ongoing adaptive reuse of this building. As a cultural institution, I would enhance the special architecture and historical character of the East Village Lower East Side Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
Right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
Next item is Public Meeting Item Number Two, LPC twenty-two dash one-one-one-zero-four. This is an application for a binding report. It's in the Borough of Manhattan, Block twenty-one oh nine, Lot one oh six, sixty-five Jamel Terrace, Morris Jamel Mansion, individual and interior landmark, also in the Jamel Terrace Historic District. This is a Georgian-style mansion built in seventeen sixty-five and remodeled in eighteen ten in the Napoleonic Empire style with federal-style details. The application is to provide barrier-free access and replace rooftop railings. This was last presented at the public meeting of August second, twenty twenty-two, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will be presenting the revisions to the proposal.
Okay, Lisa, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. You may experience some delays on certain slides, just FYI. You may
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Lisa Schaefer, Preservation Staff. The application for the Morris Jamel Mansion is for the installation of barrier-free access. And when you saw this proposal in August, you requested that the length of the proposed ramp be reduced and the composite wood railings be replaced with a railing that would provide greater transparency. So on the left is the previous proposal, and on the right is the revised proposal. And with regrading of the site on the east side of the building where the ramp is proposed, the applicants were able to eliminate one side of the ramp, reducing it to a single run perpendicular to the building. So once again, this is what it was previously, and this is the revised design. And along with the regrading and existing brick path will be reconfigured in the area of the ramp. So this is the existing site plan, and this is the brick path, which is currently adjacent to the building. And there will be this slight, more than a little slight bulge in order to accommodate the new ramp and to accommodate the regrading of the site. And this is the porch on the east side where the ramp is going to be installed. And in addition to the ramp, the existing porch steps will be reconstructed and extended. And another part of the proposal, when this was presented to you in August, was replacing existing or, well, historic roof railings. You could see some here, and on the main roof, they existed historically. And at that time, they were going to be replaced in composite wood. That has now been changed to painted wood, and therefore, it's going to be part of the staff-level restorative work. So you are just going to be looking at the ramp today. Again, that's that brick path that's going to be reconfigured slightly. And again, just a larger view of the site with the proposed ramp and the extended steps. And this is a view previously on the top that was the proposed ramp. And then this is the revised, in which it's now perpendicular, so it doesn't block any of the east facade. And that's a view on the top, previous, and on the bottom revised. And this is the proposed railing, which will now be a painted wrought iron. And on the reconstructed porch steps, there will be a painted wood railing. And this is the previous view on the left and the revised view on the right. And these are just two different views. One is the previous view from the south, and then this is the revised view from the north. And I believe that's it. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Lisa. So Commissioners, do we have any questions for Lisa or the applicant? All right, I'm not seeing any questions, so I think we can move to our discussion. And I'm just gonna ask you all to unmute, so we can begin that. And I do want to note for the record that Commissioner Goldblum and Commissioner Chapin are recused on this item and have not been present for the presentation and are not present for our discussion. So as Lisa presented, this was an application that we saw last summer for rooftop railings to be fabricated in a composite material and a ramp on the east facade that had two runs. And at that time, we did ask them to consider wood for the rooftop railings and to simplify the ramp, reduce its size if possible, and do railings that would be more transparent. And so the applicants have been able, through regrading, to reduce that ramp to a single run. They're proposing a black metal railing, and the steps right next to it will have a wood railing instead of a composite railing as well. So technically, the wood railings are now eligible for staff-level review, so we'll be focusing our discussion on the ramp. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you start this one?
Yes, I think this is a great improvement. I think, obviously, reducing the the second leg or eliminating the second leg of the ramp is big. It's much better to have the ramp sort of work with the landscape, and I think the regrading was a really good way to do that. I also think that the change in material from the white-painted composite wood to the black-painted metal Um, I also think that the change in material from the, the white painted composite wood to the black painted metal, makes it much more, much less visible and sort of works with the existing artwork that's there on the site and much lighter appearance. Um, so I think this is appropriate and I can approve it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I can approve this, but I, I have a problem with it, that the the ramp seems to belong. It almost feels like it's part of the building, a contemporary building with a ramp. And, you know, maybe if the language was different, if it wasn't in really, the formal relationships weren't the same, it might be a little bit contrasty. I can approve it. But, and I think the railings help say it's a different era, black era, but, so I can approve it. But I wish there was a way that it just didn't seem to belong. It was different. But I don't know if there's a way to do that.
To do more, more of an interest, okay? I do think the railings help with that.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I do think that, uh, the, the change in the ori- orientation and materiality of the railing have made a big difference. Um, the, it, the ramp is much, now much less obtrusive, and, um, it's much more transparent. It just doesn't get in the way, and I think the regrading was a very good idea as well. And I appreciate the change to wood on the, uh, railing top, so I can approve this.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, uh, I made agreement. I think this is a much improved over the last version. Uh, the ramp help, and I, I, I hear Commissioner Jefferson's concern, and I, I don't know what the solution is on that one other than landscaping maybe, uh, but it will look out of, out of the place. Uh, but the railing, the painting of the railing does help.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chu, I know you didn't see this the first time, but we've sort of walked through what the previous version was and the today's response.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. I also think the rendering isn't helping because the, the path itself wouldn't ever be that white. It, it would actually be darker, and I think that would make that contrast come down a little bit there too.
Okay.
Yes, appropriate.
Great. All right, so I think we can move to approve this one. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you read the motion?
Yes. In the matter of LPC twenty-two, one 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 zero four, sixty-five Jamel Terrace, the Morris Jamel Mansion, individual and interior landmark, and in the Jamel Terrace Historic District. Uh, a Georgian style mansion built in seventeen sixty-five and remodeled in eighteen ten in the Napoleonic Empire style with federal style details. The application is to provide barrier free access and replace rooftop railings. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural or character of the Jamel Terrace Historic District. I re- I recommend issuing a positive report, finding that the proposed ramp will allow for accessibility into the park space and to the house with minimal changes to the house or landscape, that the perpendicular orientation of the ramp to the house will not substantially alter or, or obscure significant features of this individual landmark. That the ramp will not be visible with the, within the context of the primary facade of the landmark. That the simply designed, black painted wrought iron railings will, will allow for a high degree of transparency that's not concealing portions of the landmark behind them. That the proposed composite wood surfaces for the ramp will have the appearance of painted wood, and thus will be compatible with the primary material of the house. That the proposed reconfiguration of a portion of the perimeter brick path will not cause damage to any significant landscape features of the land- landmark site. That the proposed alterations to the east elevation steps to accommodate the new ramp will only require the removal of utilitarian features. That the reconfigured steps and landing and new wood railing will be compatible with the details and materials and the existing wood elements on the house and with the character of a secondary entrance. And that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Morris Jamel Mansion, landmark site, or the Jamel Terrace Historic District.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
I second them.
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
With six in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved. Thank you, and thank you for being so responsive. And we'll now move to our public hearing agenda.
Okay, and we'll begin that with public hearing item number one. LPC twenty-three dash zero two seven one two. This is an application for a certificate, a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of the Bronx, block twenty-two eighty-five, lot seventy-five, four twenty-seven, East one hundred and fortieth Street in the Mott Haven East Historic District. This is a Romanesque revival, Renaissance revival style row house designed by Walter H. C. Horneham and built in eighteen ninety-seven to nineteen hundred. Uh, the application is to construct rear yard and rooftop additions, construct a connecting building on a portion of the lot, and excavate a portion of the rear yard.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Eric, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen.
Okay.
And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Uh, please note that due to the size of the presentation, you may experience some delays as you go through the presentation. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Uh, my name is, uh, Eric Safian, uh, from Eric Safian Architect PC, and I'm here with, uh, project architect Kevin Kaler.
Hello.
Um, I wanted to start by giving the owner, uh, the owner of the lot, just a few minutes for a brief intro, and then we would take over with, um, the presentation, uh, Josh Dardas.
Hi, good morning. I'm Josh Dardasian. I'm a principal at Dash Real Estate Group. Uh, we're a private, family-owned, um, builder. Uh, we've been active in the Mott Haven section of the Bronx for almost twenty years. Uh, amongst other projects in the neighborhood, uh, this would be our sixth project we brought before the Landmark Preservation Commission uh, in the Mott Haven and Mott Haven East Historic Districts. Uh, so we are familiar with the type of quality design and workmanship that's expected of us as builders. Uh, we've restored facades of these buildings and constructed sensitive enlargements uh, with the help of the commission on, on several of these buildings. Uh, all the buildings were vacant, um, and often severely damaged by fire, water, years of neglect. So we're proud to have brought these buildings back to their former beauty, uh, and offer people within the community still plagued with high crime and poverty a safe and comfortable and modern place to call home. Uh, the rest of the properties have been held and maintained as rentals. Uh, but for this project, we're proposing to build a ten unit condominium building. Uh, there is demand for homeownership in Mott Haven and very limited inventory. Uh, the building will support homeownership in Mott Haven and give its residents an opportunity to invest in their neighborhood and a piece of history. Uh, we've taken careful consideration in the design, uh, and the materials to complement the historic arrangement of this block and the Manhattan, Manhattan, uh, Mott Haven East District as a whole. We thank you very much for your time and consideration, and we hope you will support this exciting project. For the presentation, I'd like to introduce our architects.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, so we've been, we've been charged with, uh, creating an extension to the end, to the last building of the historic row. And I would like to present some historical photos and block analysis to to give you an idea of the context and, and, and the history of the row in relation to the adjacent buildings in the row, and then I'll get into the design. So we're, as, we're, we're in Mott Haven East, uh, Historic District. You could see our, uh, our lot is, is basically mid-block, but at the end of the historic row. It's a, it's a about a block and a half, um, historic district. And we can look at some additional photos here. Here's, uh, a block elevation showing the different typologies along the block. Going from left to right, there's the corner building. Our, our lot is, is right here after four twenty-seven. So there's a series of eleven row houses, uh, uh, built by the same architect and developer. Then there's a, a church and a rectory structure, and then there's a series of mul- denser multifamily housing. And here's just a zoomed in view of our specific, uh, vacant lot that we're extending onto. The architect Walter Orneham and the developer William O'Gorman, they created the series of eleven row houses in, in, I would say quite a whimsical style. It's, it's been written about in the New York Times and in, um, A Guide to Historic New York City Neighborhoods. And you could see here in the designation photo that there's this sort of, uh, pattern of, of heights and that establishes the rhythm of the historic row, the, the first and the last building serve, uh, served to bookend the row with, with taller structures. And furthermore, William O'Gorman, who was the developer, left himself our specific house on, on the lot that we're extending onto is, which is number four twenty-seven. That, that was the, also the widest of, of the buildings. Most of them were seven, about seventeen feet wide. Four twenty-seven is twenty-two feet wide and sits on a thirty-nine foot wide, uh, lot. So there's, we're, we're creating a seventeen foot wide extension to that last of the row. This, I, I wanted to highlight this historic map from nineteen oh four. The, this, this is kind of important to our narrative. We're, we're showing that the church and rectory structures were were, were built later, um, where you could see by this, by the vacant lot that's there now. So the historic row was a standalone row that was constructed at the same time late eight, uh, late eighteen hundreds or around nineteen hundred, and then you could see the, the denser multifamily housing to the right. Uh, also as a, a sort of separate typology within, within the block and within the district. Uh, a, a little further context with the nineteen forties tax photos. Uh, on the left is four twenty-five, which is, and you can see partially four twenty-seven, which uh, we're unfortunately unable to locate that tax photo. So we're showing four twenty-five and then followed by the rectory building and the church itself. And you could see the multifamily housing in, in the foreground of that. This is some more landmark designation photos where what, what we found, uh, prevalent in the district was there is always a transition to the row, whether it was this historic row or, or, or even the row across the street. Uh, so you could see here, uh, the first in the row was four oh seven. That transitions and sort of cascades backward from the street through the use of, uh, of bays and and it, they were also the taller buildings, uh, of, of the row as well, whi- which was the case not just for our row, but in these other and these other transition conditions. This is a current, uh, current view of those same transitions. Again, just going back to the, the first of the row at four oh seven and four oh nine. Images two and three are showing, um, the context of, of the church building and the rectory and how they're sort of framed and what their relationship is to the street. You could see, uh, how they're actually set back from the multifamily housing by this wall. That's a, it's about ten feet deep until the, the church structure begins. And then images four and five are across the street and on, and a, and a block away on the other, on the other side of the block within the district, there's these similar transition buildings that, um, start and end the row. This is, just wanted to give more context on the, the typical row houses. Image one are the, are the rows across the street where there were just a uniform three-story uh, row with, with, with a front stoop. Then there's a, a series of, uh, multifamily, much denser, uh, taller, uh, housing. And then around the corner was, uh, a similar row with, with also a, a, a transitionary, uh, sort of end, end cap building. And then looking at the, the block analysis, you, you could see, um, on the aerial view and, and on, on the block figure ground, the depth that, uh, at which some of these other typologies protrude back into the rear yard and also protrude forward towards, towards the street. So you could see our lot here is in context with, uh, with our enlargement overlaid into the, in, into the figure ground. And you could see starting with, uh, four oh seven, it actually, it, which is the, the, the green four-story structure, it protrudes forward and also protrudes back into the rear yard as well. And then I'll skip to the church and rectory structures, which also protrude back quite a bit. Uh, well, the church does, the, the rectory protrudes, uh, an additional five feet back beyond the main row. And then the multifamily housing protrudes um, much deeper into the, into the rear yard. Here's some, just some more detailed views of, of our lot or partial lot in, in context with, with the row. You could see, um, here it's, it's the last of the row and how it abuts up to the rectory building and, and then further in the aerial views, you could see, um, the interior courts and, and, and the, and the front and what those figure grounds look like, um, i- in their massing and, and also just to show how they protrude and also their, their massing and rhythm, you could see how there's a, a up and down, um, pattern along the blocks. And I wanted to highlight some of the specific details of, of the historic row itself. It was really, in a way, kind of a, a fertile playground for the architect as far as different styles and, and really in, incredible whimsical approaches to detailing. The, the, the first building in the row, we wanted to focus on these darker, um, reddish brown bricks, which actually end up uh, on four twenty-seven and the last of, of the row that we're extending on to have, have a sort of similar color, um. And then these are some of the houses in between, highlighting some of, some of the detailing there. And then here's the the end of the row, uh, four twenty-seven to which we're extending on to. You could see here, it's sort of splattered in bright colored paint, but a, upon closer look, y- you see a reddish brown Ro- Roman brick. You see, um, you know, the existing terracotta roofs, uh, ornate woodwork and a rusticated, uh, brownstone base. There's some additional photos of the front stoop also uh, in line with a, a rusticated brownstone base, which we would be restoring as part of this project. View, view of the rear of the neighboring facades, you know, I, I wanted to start with the view on the left, uh, loo- looking east, what, you, you can see the rectory building and There's an you can see an extension, and so you see how it sort of protrudes back into the rear yard. Uh, beyond. The 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 rest of the of the block, followed by the vacant lot. Or or portion of the lot, excuse me. Here's the the rear of the existing building at four twenty seven um. And then a view down towards the row uh, you know, towards the beginning of the row. At four oh seven and four oh nine. Uh, the these two images below are 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 sort of zoomed in images. We wanted to highlight how. The first building in the historic row is set back uh five feet and actually has a modern, kind of more modern facade that was renovated. Uh, and then in the second image, there's. You see that same last protrusion, and there's also. A more recently approved landmark uh stair bulkhead is part of a renovation of one of the middle row houses. Uh. Similar context, just viewed from the roof. Uh, the first image is is looking forward uh, looking towards the front of the street. You could see here, there's actually an existing bulkhead. With access to the roof, that's actually also visible. Uh, image two is looking back towards the first row and highlighting um. A bulkhead on the on the original on that on that first. House and then that intermediate bulkhead I just mentioned, which is at four fifteen. Uh, this is. Looking back and then. The east view, these two views are looking at the church and multifamily housing beyond. And you can really see how the the massing of those structures. Um, start to really, you know, come back into the rear yard again. So this is our proposed massing and and kind of. Design diagram, which there'll be a a more detailed render or a little a little further. Uh, I wanted to uh. Kind of spell out our approach here, where we're proposing um. An extension. To four twenty seven. That that's acting as an end cap to the row. So we were proposing this uh tri- triangle shaped bay that just protrudes out three feet. And. In a way, acts as 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 a bookend to the row and sort of is in dialogue with with the first two buildings of the row as well. Then then there are the two church structures and then in blue in the foreground is 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 the multifamily uh housing. What uh? What allows us to actually protrude forward and stay out of alignment is. Um. Some language in the zoning resol- resolution that allows for us to protrude up to three feet. And up to fifty percent of the width of the lot. Where uh, you know, which comes out to nineteen and a half feet, we're we're proposing a more subtle. Uh, triangular. Shape bay where you could see in this dotted line. The the footprint of of that shape. And the idea is that it it sort of aligns with the existing facade and then. Uh. You know, more gently uh protrudes out and and forms a subtle end cap to the row. Here, uh, I'll be getting into the. Proposed massing and plans and visibility studies, so. You could see the existing survey and our proposal highlighted in yellow. As uh. Horizontal enlargement technically to to the existing buildings where. Where uh. Filling the full width of of the lot at seventeen feet wide and going back four foot ten. You know, allowing for a thirty foot rear yard. And we're also uh extending back the the same four foot ten uh onto the existing building. And uh also proposing uh a bulkhead above the existing building for. For a required egress. Uh, here's sort of an overview of the plans where. You you could see the plans are actually occupying the width of the entire. Uh, of the original and, you know, in enlargement to the building, so they'll they'll. Occupy across across the width and you can see how. Um, that footprint works with with the proposed enlargement. Uh, one one thing I would add here is that we actually are. Were required to have two means of egress so that you you see two stairs. That are internal to the building, which uh. Results in the size of the bulkhead that you see on the roof. Uh, this is our um. Similar massing for for kind of creating an end cap to the row, but from the interior court perspective. Um. You know, basically, our approach here is you you could really see how. You know, in respect to the idea of a a an established donut, quote unquote, the donut in the interior court. It really starts to decompose. Because we're we're the last in the row and then. The the church structures and then the multifamily housing really start to. Um, protrude into the yard. Much, much deeper than than the rest of the row. Uh, what I also want to highlight is. You know, we have a. Our kind of direct precedent is actually the first, the first building in the row. Does also project out uh approximately five feet. At the full height. So we're basically. Um, creating a similar uh massing in response to that. And we're proposing that same uh. Uh, five foot uh. Extension a- as part of a kind of end end cap bookend strategy to to cap the row on at the rear yard level. This is um. So really more of more of a diagram to to show. The the transition and how the church structures would. Would get framed by the two different uh. Elements on on the block. So on the right side. There's this ten foot wall that I highlighted previously. Which is the the sort of blank facade of the multifamily housing. And then we're proposing our bay, our triangular bay. Would protrude out three feet and create sort of a framing of the of the church structure. Mid-block a- as its own standalone. Um, structures. Here's the um. Section through the existing. Four twenty seven. Where you could see our proposed enlargement and and bulkhead as far as direct visibility from across the street. Uh, there is none. But there is uh. Some o- oblique visibility, which I'll I'll highlight in a second. Um, this is just another transverse uh. Section slide showing the uh extent of the enlargement. Um. So this is the o- oblique diagram, you could see the the angle of view and the legend. And we're we're proposing uh in you know, the sort of code required. Forty-two inch high railings with. A a a slight, a slight portion of the bulkhead. Being visible beyond which which we'll we'll see in the roof photos, but. Essentially, the the bulkhead. And the railings uh. Are overlapping in their in their visibility. Here's the roof, actual rooftop level mockups. You can see. In wood on the left is the railing and then the the bulkhead is in the orange netting. Here's some overall visibility. Uh, you know, highlighted by the by the views here um. You know, we we went back. On a cold winter day to highlight, you know, when with the leaves gone to to see the. The actual visibility, not blocked by trees, and this this is. What what's able to be seen, which also um was in that oblique section view. And there's this zoomed in view of that on the next slide. As far as visibility from. From the other side looking west. Our proposed uh, our proposed enlargement would. E- entirely uh conceal the bulkhead. Um. You know, just by by virtue of 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 being proposed to be a four story building, and that that's just illustrated here in a few different angles. Um. So he- here I wanted to, you know, get into some of our. Design strategy and and kind of material choices for. Um. Complementing. Uh, and and contrasting with the existing uh. Four twenty seven historic structure. He first first off, one, once it's restored, it it'll actually have a much more. Restrained look. A a lot of that reddish brown brick will be restored with rusticated brown base. Um. So. We've. We've selected specific bricks that are are similar in size and color. We 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 chose specifically this. Uh, Glengarry uh Potenza brick, which is. Uh. A a narrow, similar in shape to the Roman brick that's that's on the historic facade. And there's a version of that that is has a little more texture and is rusticated. We've chosen that for just the base here. You you could see a little more clearly in a in a upcoming render. Uh, but. But here, I I just wanted to kind of delineate that on the on the facade drawing. Um. We're we're also proposing for the dormer. Um. To protrude out behind a a similar mansard type roof. That we're proposing in a standing seams zinc material. It would be matching the angle of the adjacent structure. And then our our, the material of our dormer is a is a fiber cement panel. Which we've used. With 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 some success on other projects, and we we feel like. The texture of that is is very, is actually quite similar to a. Um. Like a a brownstone. Texture that there's there's different um levels of texture, and there's some more info on that in the appendix as well. For for further material info. Um, an- another thing we were doing here is really. Picking up on the hierarchy of of the window sizing and the existing facade. You see that there's sort of a play on windows here at the parlor level, there's. A a large, a large bay. Followed by uh medium sized windows on the second floor and much narrower windows on the third, so we've. Basically. Created a a similar window sizing. And. The the way they've been placed on the facade is they're sort of aligned with the crease uh or or the fold. Of the bay, what once it starts protruding out of the facade. So they're all um. Sort of. In line with that. But being on either the the left side of that at of that crease at the parlor level. Having a double double glazed. Double window effect. Highlighting that fold, and then on the top, it goes back to the skinnier windows being on the on the right side of that of that fold. Where the um. For the rear facade, we um. We we differentiated the footprint of the existing and and the enlarged building uh were by. Proposing um slightly. Sort of a tone on tone, slightly different shaded cementitious stucco treatment. Uh, with different window patternings for for the new enlargement. And we're also. Proposing to incorporate the original brick. Corbelling detail. Uh, that that's there now, as well as uh give the railings uh. You know, their own differentiation, so so it reads like. Separate but related um facades. The facade, uh, the this is. Looking west from the, you know, with a cut through the church church rectory building, you could see. We're proposing to continue this uh. This sort of Roman style brick by Glenn. Glengarry for that first three feet that the wall protrudes beyond, so. That brick essentially wraps the bay and comes back on to the rectory structure. Um. There's also some. Corner details that we're proposing a a stitching of of the brick. Just, you know, to further accentuate um. Some of some of the richness and we're trying to create a a richness in the texture. But we're we're at the same time trying to keep it. Uh, restrained and respectful to the historic structure that that's adjacent. So we're, you know, this is some of the details proposed, the the rest of that. Um. Facade is also proposed to be the same cementitious stucco as as well as for the bulkhead. Part of the new enlargement had had required a. Uh, basement level ADA entry. So. We we've sort of created a landscape that that incorporated tinted. Concrete in in a bluestone color. Uh, surrounded by fixed planters. There's a a gentle slope down. To to reach the main entry door. And. Excuse me, we're also proposing um. Uh, uh. A more streamlined uh railing in front of that as as part of the entryway. And. You know, this this is our proposed view that 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 I would conclude the presentation with um. You know, basically, we were trying to. Always strike a balance between being uh. The last uh structure, uh, the 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 bookend of of a row house, while at the same time. Being an enlargement to a. Heavily ornate and historic structure. And. We, you know, we try to keep in dialogue with with the scale. And the materiality of the adjacent structure and even the rest of the row. And um. There's, I that that would be um. Yeah, I think I will just end on that and we, there's some additional materials in the index on uh. Materials.
Okay, great. Thank you. Right, commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I think it was a very thorough presentation, so thank you for that, and I think that's. Uh, why we don't have any questions at this time, but we'll move to public testimony and we may have questions after that. So if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you, and I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We received a couple of signups beforehand for this item, so we'll be hearing from those people first. The first of which is Lucy Levine from Historic Districts Council. So I'll be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC is glad uh the applicant is proposing to fill the gap in this row, and we feel this proposal could be successful. But we note the very strong A A B, A A B. But we note the very strong A A B, A A B rhythm to this row of brownstones. Any new addition to this row should follow that rhythm of A A B, A A B. Accordingly, the new building on the empty lot should be scaled with the A units, not the B units as proposed. In order to be scaled appropriately, the new building should be three stories, not four. Further, we feel that the arrangement of the windows on the proposed new building requires further study, but will likely be resolved if the building itself is reduced by a story. The rear addition, while modest, is inappropriate because the rears on this row are uniform and should remain so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. Okay. I don't see any hands raised, but I do know I see Christina Conroy from V S N Y in as an attendee and she did sign up for this. Christina, are you with us? Yes, I see her hand raised now. So Christina Conroy, I will be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thank you, commissioners. Um, good morning. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now founded in New York City in nineteen sixty-six, the Victorian Society in America is is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our nineteenth and early twentieth century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors and civic art. Now, we are excited to support the attention and restoration work proposed for this Mott Haven Row House. That said, we want to draw attention to the proposed side addition and how it relates to the neighboring row houses on the block. The block has a clear architectural pattern. Two shorter row houses are followed by a taller, more decorative row house. The proposed three-story addition disrupts this rhythm and gives the impression of two neighboring three-story houses. We would suggest that the side addition be revised to lower and minimize the third story to adhere to this pattern and allow the predominance of the last house in the historic row to be maintained. We also suggest that the detailing of the facade, which relies almost completely on changing the direction of the brickwork, doesn't compare favorably with the rich texture and materials of the historic houses in the row. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. And I'm looking through our attendees. I do not see any further hands raised. So I will just note for the record that Bronx Community Board One recommends approval and I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
All right, thank you very much. So I'd like to turn to the owner and the applicants and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Uh, yes, if I, if I may respond. I I just wanted, yeah, I I I wanted to point out that you know, uh, initially, our our strategy was at at first glance was sort of a a fill the gap or or missing tooth quote unquote strategy where it it was uh, an infill, but upon the further research and and the history of the historic row itself, being um, as as a standalone structure and being constructed prior to the adjacent rectory building and the and the church, which is part of the church structures. Um, we're actually, uh, you know, in in our view, we're proposing to be in line with that pattern, which starts on the first rows as as a four and then comes down to a three and then goes two, three, two, three. Uh, and and back to a four, which is actually, that's the current condition at four twenty-seven. And we're also just extending on to that. So we're not we're not techni- we're not a separate building. It we're we're an extension to that building. So we're we're trying to strike that balance between row house that that's uh, a seventeen-foot wide cap, but at the same time is is an extension to the same building that's part of, that's on the same lot. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any final questions? Am I muted? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, whatever's muted. Any final questions, commissioners? All right. So I think what we'll do is we'll move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Holker Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lepfey, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And this is for um, a new building in um, on the street where there is a gap. The gap was um, oh, was never built on, so there never was a building on this lot. It was not a formally occupied by a building within this row. And I think the applicants are trying to, and I want to first say, I think it's, you know, exciting that there's an opportunity to approve new housing in a historic district. And um, especially if that housing can support residents uh, in the neighborhood and allow them to invest in their neighborhood. So I do think that this is an exciting opportunity for us um, to think about this site. Um, this is a lot that, as I said, never had a building. And so I think that's one way to think about it. It is also a an extension or an enlargement to an existing building in the row. And I think what the applicants are trying to do is sort of balance or bridge between sort of doing, it's a building that sort of stands alone as an infill, since it never was part of the row, but be deferential or respectful to the row. Um, and so I think that that there's a way for us to think about it that way and not necessarily think about it as another building in this row. Um, but rather a standalone building that relates to it. Um, but we'll have a discussion about height, massing, design and materials. And uh, we'll begin that now with our our Bronx Commissioner, Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure, thank you. Um, this is a really interesting project and a really interesting uh, in in a lovely little district um. And I I'm, I'm, I really appreciate, I want to echo what you were saying first, uh, Chair Carol. This, it's great to see this kind of investment in this neighborhood. It's it's especially great when we will probably spend the rest of the day looking at conversions of multifamilies into single families to see a multi-family housing in a townhouse, which is what so very desperately needed in our city. But um, that's off the top. Um, I think that this house has has, in a way, a lot going on and it's kind of not figured out yet. And I think that the applicant while had had, they grappled with a lot of issues and and presented us a very thorough examination of the district and the building and all that. Um, I think that the resulting design is not yet fully cooked for the following reasons. Number one, the proposal to make the building echo end cap projects is uh, is amiss. Uh, end caps occur at the ends of the block where the building row, the mid-block row is transitioning to end, end-block corner buildings on the avenues that typically come to the street line. And you need a kind of physical transition from that setback condition at the center of the block to the end condition at the ends of the block. This is a mid-block site. This is right smack in the middle of this block. It's not the end of the block. It's not the end of the district. It it should be, it should not be treated as an end-block site. But the fact is, they don't need to view this project as an end-block site to get to their form. I mean, it the, it reminds me of two interesting projects, I think. One is the um, uh, the townhouse on nine-eleventh Street, I think it was, it is by Harry Olsen Pfeiffer, where where they blew up the uh, where it got blown up in the sixties. Um, where you have a similar angled angled insertion that kind of reads as a bay uh, in a mid-block condition. Um, uh, and it also reminds me in a funny way of 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 the heart of the um, uh, Ventura Rouch uh, British Museum edition, where the, you know, the facade kind of just folds out. Um, there's something about this kind of crease in the plane that is resolutely modern or postmodern and not quasi-traditional. And I think that that's an, that's not an inappropriate thing. But I think the fact that it occurs in the mid-block means that you're kind of not engaging in the urban conversation that we would hope it would engage in. Another aspect of confusion here is whether this is an addition or a standalone. Now, you had phrased it, Chair Carol, as be viewed as a standalone. But it's not a standalone, and that's not how they presented it. Um, or it's kind enough how they presented it. So if it's an addition, then the relations between the the base building and the new have to be more articulate. Uh, whether that's with shadow lines, whether that's with different materials. It's got a, and if it's an addition, also, I think that the comments in the uh, the 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 um, community comments that we've heard, testimony are more relevant. Then your A A A B, A A B height issue is more of a a relevant issue because you're joining your building to this row, which is to the left. And so therefore you should follow their rules. And if that's, if that's the way you want to go, then the top floor should in fact be set back probably at least five feet, seven feet, so that you can make that reading of A A B, A A B while keeping your height, which I think would be okay. But I think if you are going to be joining to the to the row, then the angled protrusion is more problematic. Because the row is is relatively uh, planer. And you want to make that assertion that you're kind of joining that conversation. And I think you also look at coloration and try to really have your building be part of, you know, you're you're filling in the missing tooth, so to speak, of the row. And so I think that the modern interpretation of the row as it exists would be a more appropriate solution. However, if you want to posit this as a standalone building, that is a modern commentary on its row, I think you can have more leeway in terms of how it, how it's pitched. But I think that the building, I don't know, there's something about this that does seem to be deferent to and attaching to the building next door. I kind of think that that's the more appropriate way to go. But I'm I'm open to hearing what other people think and and uh, opening the conversation up a little bit. I think in terms of the rear facade, the um, the proposed addition can go back as far as it wants, in my view, and can be made out of stucco and uh, can have the design that it it has. I don't think there's anything inappropriate about that. But I think that given the fact that this row is otherwise unencumbered with any additions in the rear facade, and the rear facade is completely intact and planar, I would be reluctant to have an addition on to that facade above the first floor. Uh, I think you could do a basement first floor addition, but the second and third floors should retain the the planer expression and and should 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 maintain the existing plane of the existing house.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holker Smith?
Okay. Um, uh, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Goldblum had to say about this. Um, I applaud their um, infilling this vacant lot and and really think it'd be fantastic for it to be um, community-based ownership. Um, I think that the I I think that the the narrative about making this an end to the bay. Um, as as Michael pointed out, it it really doesn't work for me. And I think it's also exacerbated by the fact that the rectory next door is appears to be in the same plane as the rest of the houses. And that um, you know, kicking the facade out sort of turned us back on the rectory. And I think that that's maybe not the right thing to be doing here. Um, and I think that a modern expression is perfectly appropriate. Um, but I think there still is that sort of ambiguity as as to whether this is being viewed as an addition or as a standalone. Um, right now, it's a bit of a mixture of both. Um, seems to me that it's 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 veering more towards the addition. Um, in which case I think it would be more appropriate to set the mansard back. Um, and I think that the 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 top volume that sits on proud of the mansard needs to be studied. Um, I feel like it's really competing with the decorative. Um, but I presume is stucco bay at the historic building. Um, I think some other things, there's some details, like the single light windows should be looked at. They'd be more appropriate for those to be at least double hungs to match the existing building. Um, but I I do think that the the facade is a little little bit of re-study. Um, the rear, I I agree that, given the strength of the rear facades of the entire row, that at least one, if not two, of the top floor of the addition should be eliminated. Um, let's see, what else is there? I think that's it. I think this, just be curious to hear what other commissioners have to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Oh, okay. Um, I think that a lot of the comments that Commissioner Goldblum mentioned, I agree with. I would say that my opinion about the three-foot projection here on this view is that, and and I do agree that the bookend effect is not appropriate here. Um, I feel like you really want to continue this facade as a missing piece, continuing that street face. And the rectory should be then therefore brought back into the fabric. And I think that's a very, that would be a much more handsome approach. Um, turning your shoulder to a, I do think creates an unnecessary disruption that by filling in this empty lot, you've done a lot to to alleviate. So I feel like it's sort of shooting itself in the foot by doing that. Um, and I think that having that uh, continuation does do a lot for the street. I do appreciate the sort of simple approach to the facade without making it too ornate, because it it allows the building on the left to to retain its prominence. So that really, if I look at the street, I want to see this left building, the existing historic one um, prominent, and then the church over to the right. Um, that makes the rectory and this building more uh, um, in keeping in terms of their 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 partnership. Um, I do think that the upper floor um, is problematic. And I think that the expression um, and proportions are a bit, a little bit awkward. And I'm especially bothered by the the higher right side to it, because it further accentuates that um, that that sort of bookend. Um, I don't mind the fact that it's slightly asymmetric as an infill building. Um, but I do again, mention that the the canted facade is my biggest issue with 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 this elevation. Um, I think it does need to be straight, um, along with the street face. Um, if it is an addition to the left building, I think we'd have a better shot approving an addition on the top at the fourth floor, if it were set back more. And again, more subservient to the the to the left existing building. Um, and keeping the palette very simple, I think helps you. And I do think you've got a pretty simple palette here. Um, I question whether or not using a cement panel will will create the desired effect and might feel um, in fact, a bit cheap on top of the brick masonry below. And then the the full Dutchman work on the building on the left, which is much more solid for materials. Um, in terms of the rear addition, um, I agree with the other comments. I think that it should not be up to the top floor. I I would entertain uh, coming up to the third, but not to the fourth floor.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Jefferson?
Uh, I agree with most of the comments except one. I think that if if you look at the termination of this block, that missing tooth, but not a missing tooth, it was just a space. And that terminates it beautifully. I think if they push this building back five feet, four feet, to recall that space would be a wonderful termination that would solve their problem. I think um, pushing it back and keeping a simple facade with with would work. I think um, pushing it back and keeping a simple facade with, with would work. I think the the, the, the problem with the folded or bent plane is that it's too timid almost. Um, and if they push it back and wanted to keep the folded plane, it doesn't make any sense, but they could. In terms of the elevation of the back, I think it, 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 the, the, the extension should be should be three, three storeys, not four. It's just, especially in an existing building. Um, the windows and facade, I agree with most, with the other commissioners. So my, my only take is, is, is the, the um, the row itself and how terminating your row.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yeah, I also agree with the, many of the comments of other commissioners. Um, just, I'll start with the back, uh, just to, I, I'll go along with other commissioners on, on just three floors, not of four. But to look at the project altogether, it seems to me that yes, there's, you're either doing an addition and extension, or you're doing a new building. Uh, I looked at it really as a new building, and I agree that it should not be capping the row because it isn't at the end of the row, and it should just be treated as a new building. I think that is an advantage actually for the applicant to, to go in that direction. Because if it's supposed to be an extension, it should be respectful, deferential, subservient. And if it's a new building, it can, in my view, it can just be four floors in the front. And uh, it certainly can be a more modern building. It still needs to be somewhat contextual as we require. But to me, actually going in that direction gives them more, uh, you know, more uh, latitude. I also feel that the current uh, design, because it was attempting to do this sort of turn the corner thing is, is not really working in the context. And particularly that sheet metal is not working on the uh, that in combination with the, the turning the corner strategy. I actually kind of like the brickwork as a, a, a somewhat modern, but you know, respectful of, you know, transitional element. Um, but anyway, I think as others do, that they really need to kind of rethink this conceptually about and, and present it either as a new building or as an addition. And if it's an addition, it has to be uh, somewhat more deferential and subordinate, it seems to me. But I could, I could see it as an, just a new building that's in a vacant a lot, which we often permit. And then just uh, make sure, you know, think about how to make it contextual with the row and with the adjacent uh, rectory and church. So that's where I'm at. I hope that's helpful enough.
That's great. Thank you. Commissioner Lutfee?
So I want to uh, thank my fellow commissioners for your comments, and I agree with a lot of them. They're great. I also just want to um, echo what um, Commissioner Goldblum said about the district is, and this block, it is lovely. And um, it overall in wonderful shape with some very interesting uh, variety, but it still has this incredible sense of uniformity and connectivity, and it just works really well together. And um, this is a wonderful opportunity to um, to fill a gap. Um, and in so doing, to provide some much-needed housing. It's a little challenging because this is a narrow um, it's a very narrow lot, which makes housing difficult, but that's not part of this discussion. I um, I'm just going to mention a few comments because I agree with so many of the others. Some, some of what I'm going to say are echoes. I like personally, I think overall, this is actually a very good project. And some changes that need to be made that can um, tie it together. Uh, and um, in my opinion, to a little more to the thing next to it, but also make it connect better to uh, the entire uh, row. Um, it seems like this new building as, from a project standpoint, as part uh, is connected to, is going to be connected to the one next to it. So I appreciate the fact that the applicant um, you know, looked to the building on the left from a materiality standpoint. Um, and provided a variation in a very attractive way um, that ties in, but just gives it a little bit of distinction and also modernity, so that you know it, they work, they work together, and there's some mutual communication and also respect from the new building um, without making it seem discordant. I also agree that um, the fold at the top doesn't quite work. Um, and that the, the mansard needs to be looked at again, and, and maybe needs to be set back a little bit. I agree with the comments that it would be nice if the windows were double hung. They don't have to be, but I, I think again, would work better. Um, and on the back, I also agree that um, once you get to the third floor, it should set back.
All right, great. Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, uh, great comments, great discussion from all the commissioners. So let's just start by um, your earlier comment that I think is great that in this um, nice block that there's a chance to uh, you know, do something positive here uh, in, in view of the, the needs of the city. Um, you know, I agree, you know, I almost agree with all of the comments, uh, most of the commissioner made about, you know, and also the testimony from Historic Tresca, um, Historic Council, District Council, uh, which is that, you know, whether it's A A B or not, um, to Michael Goldblum, as always, to say, he should be architectural critic. He does a great analysis. And, and I, I also echo Commissioner Chu's comment, I think, is uh, so, so the way to look at this building, if indeed, is not the end block. Uh, and so the applicant has a couple of choices. One is obviously that as he, as they presented, is an extension. So if it's an extension, is it a continuation or is it a new extension? So I think that the one comment that has not been suggested is to say, if we have such great admiration for the detailing of the original building on the left, uh, is it worthwhile to explore continuing those motifs on the new addition and along with a slight articulation, more articulation rather than this bland facade that's, that's, this is part of the original building. I do not know if that's the approach. I just throwing it out there since it sounds like the applicant had to go back to the joint board. And, and by the way, it is indeed a great, great, great project. Uh, I think it just need tweaking. I agree with most of the commissioners' comment about the, the, the folding on the top of the mansard roof area, that does not work. Uh, that, that is clearly calling attention to itself, is not differential, as Commissioner Chu said correctly, to the original nice building to the left. Um, and so, and Commissioner Jefferson made a comment, nice comment about whether you want to do that articulation by recessing slightly, so that this thing really stands out and give the building on the left the prominence. So I, I, I leave it to the applicant and the commissioner to decide uh, uh, on, on this thing. But I think, you know, uh, uh, just, this is a great project, just need the further minor modifications.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you all for your thoughtful comments. And so, um, we do have, I think, a lot of um, suggestions, and I hope that the applicants were um, listening. And I think that, you know, the real key is to really figure out how you want to express this, whether it's an addition to the row or standalone. Uh, but as an addition to the row, I think we got some really um, good suggestions and comments from the commissioners. So we'll ask you to uh, regroup um, and re-study and think about the comments and come back to us as soon as you're ready with a revised proposal, and we'll see you soon. So we'll take no action, and we'll now move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number two, LPC twenty-three dash zero seven zero zero nine. An application for a binding report in the borough of the Bronx, block twenty-four sixty-nine, lot one, Joyce Kilmer Park in the Grand Concourse Historic District. This is a park established circa nineteen twenty-six, and the application is to install a freestanding restroom enclosure prototype and a mechanical cabinet and to alter paving.
Hey commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Sybil, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow key or your mouse. Are you able to unmute yourself? Okay, let me uh, let me go ahead and take this back and allow you to unmute yourself first. There you go.
Okay, yes, I think I've unmuted myself.
Great. Can you uh, click on your screen? And then you can state your name for the record. You may begin.
Okay, great. Uh, good morning commissioners. My name is Sybil Young, and I'm Parks's Historic Preservation Officer. Um, I'm joined today by Julie Fisher and Chad McNeil from our Architecture Department. And we are here today to present the location for a prefabricated public restroom um, known as the Portland Lou within Joyce Kilmer Park in the Grand Concourse Historic District. Um, this slide is uh, showing that this is part of a limited citywide initiative to bring these um, uh, prefabricated toilets to parks where there are no restrooms. Uh, there are five locations proposed, uh, one in each borough, and Joyce Kilmer is the one for the Bronx. Um, several of these locations are in underserved communities and all are lacking in restroom facilities. Um, just briefly, the goals are pretty simple, to provide more pub, public restrooms where we don't have them, and to do this at a lower cost and with a um, a shorter construction duration than our standard um, restrooms. Um, here in the bottom right, you see one of these installed in Cambridge, Massachusetts. Um, I believe there's one installed and one planned. Um, they're both approved for historic districts. Um, and in selecting the sites for these, there were certain practical considerations we had to look at. Um, keeping the connections to utilities, um, a short run, trying to place them in visible locations with high pedestrian traffic, um, within well-lit areas and near pedestrian paths. I'm just showing the, you the location here within the Grand Concourse Historic District. Joyce Kilmer is in green. And the park has two monuments, and then here in the north section up by East one sixty-fourth is a very active playground and spray shower, really the more um, busy area of the park, which is another reason we are locating it here with, shown with this X. Um, the designation report for the district notes that the park consists of lawns and formal tree-lined walks along with two monuments that pre-exist the park and were relocated when the park was redesigned in nineteen thirty-six. Um, so in addition to those practical requirements I mentioned, we also looked carefully at the park and its historic character and tried to cite it in a way that it would not have any negative impact on that historic character, not block views to the monument, not affect that um, formality of the park. And just to zoom in of our location here off the path at one sixty-fourth, the red X would be that restroom. Some images of the playground and spray shower, and then here on the left, our um, restroom would be installed right around here. This is the existing view looking south from one sixty-fourth. And the proposed, um, the installation requires that we do expand the path slightly to provide a flat surface for the um, restroom. The only text on the restroom is up at the roof line where it says public restroom. There'll be no, no other signage or advertising on the structure. It also necessitates the installation of an electrical cabinet and RPZ shown here, which we intend to screen with plantings. Um, also, I should note, it's, it's shown here in this gray um, metal color, although um, after preparing these sl- slides, we did do more research on finishes for that these in, equipment enclosures, and we do intend to finish them in a dark green so that they will fade better into the landscape. The view looking north to one sixty-fourth. And then again, with the um, restroom installed. Um, in plan, the existing conditions and proposed, you can see um, better here how the path will be modified to accommodate the installation. Um, and then just um, the palette of materials here, it's quite simple. The restroom will be finished with an anti-graffiti-resistant epoxy coating. As I mentioned, the cabinets will be finished in a dark green color. This is not quite accurate, but they will be dark green. And we're also replacing an existing drinking fountain with an ADA compliant drinking fountain. Um, so that's about it. And in summary, um, we think we're providing a much-needed amenity, um, and due to the careful sighting, um, simple design and small footprint, feel it will have a, a minimal impact on the historic park. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. We have a few questions. All right, Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
I might have missed it, but do you have any dimensions on this object? Height, width, et cetera?
We do have that in an appendix.
Cool. So five, five by nine, one, and then vertical? So it's eight foot nine high? Okay, and if I tiptoe, I can look inside and see, see what's going on. All right, that's good. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, uh, how many other prototypes like these are out there besides the Portland Lou? Are you muted, Sybil?
Oh, sorry, I'm within the city?
Uh, yes, that, that the Parks Department have considered.
That's a good question. Um, we haven't, I know there's one by Prospect Park. Um, but we haven't done any in a number of years. Julie or Chad, do you know if we have others? Nothing recently.
Yeah, the ones in Governor's Island, are those yours, or is that belong to the Governor's Island?
Yeah, those are not ours.
Okay, and they use a different prototype, correct?
I, I'm not sure what theirs are. I don't know, Chad or Julie, do you know what the Governor's Island ones are?
This is uh, Julie Fisher from Parks. Uh, no, I'm, I'm not sure um, about the Governor's Island ones. These are the only prototypes for a single, single-use bathrooms that um, I'm aware of Parks installing.
Okay, the reason for my asking is I, I'm, uh, I was just given the tour recently of the Brooklyn Bridge, the proposed Brooklyn Bridge Park. Uh, and they are also proposing some public toilets. And so I'm wondering whether they will be using this prototype or is there another thing on the horizon?
So Br- Brooklyn Bridge Park is a separate entity. It's not under the Parks Department, as is, and is similar to Governor's Island, which is uh, run by the Trust for Governor's Island. So this is um, a prototype for Parks Department. Um, parks, parks that are under the Parks Department's uh, control and ownership.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yeah, um, I understand there are five of these proposed, you know, for different locations. Uh, and this is the Portland Lou, which uh, they do not have in the Uh, and this is the Portland Lou, which uh, they do not have in the city anywhere as far as I know. But has been extremely successful in Portland, uh, which is a, a good mark in my opinion. And we talk about more discussion, I'll get it. Uh, the ca- um, the cabinets are dark green, but the comfort station itself will be the, will be the silver color. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a charcoal gray color. Um, and it's the only color that provides that epoxy coating for graffiti, which is one of the main reasons it was selected.
Yeah, I, I agree strongly with that. Uh, the other question I had is um Did you look at all at solar panels uh, for this or is this a prefab unit? Uh, I understand that these have been sometimes placed somewhere with uh, using solar panels or, or some, go ahead.
I can, I can speak to that. Um, we did, there are options for solar panels for the Portland Lou, but they're really not recommended for uh, the Northeast. Those have, have been installed in places like San Antonio, which have um, much higher um, sun um, availability and also um, don't need the level of heat tracing that we need to keep the Lou operationally around.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm, I'm so happy to hear that you're using color because, you know, just this gray functional uh, material. It doesn't work in a park as well as color. It would add, the color would add something to the park's environment, so I'm happy to hear that.
All right, other questions? Okay, let's move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to take us through the testimony.
Thank you Chair Carol. We've received one sign-up event for this item, so we'll be hearing from them first. Uh, that will be Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. So Lucy Levine, I'll be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine, speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC understands that this restroom is a new project. We note however, that it could be painted and we feel that a coat of Parks Department green would make it more appropriate to its surroundings. In terms of citing, we feel this is an appropriate place for the unit, but we feel the applicant should further minimize the visibility of the RPZ unit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. And I am looking through our attendees now and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will just note for the record that Bronx Community Board four recommends approval and I'll bring it back to Chair Carol.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, so I'd like to turn back to the uh, applicants and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we heard.
Um, I think just to be clear, um, we are coloring the RPZ cabinet a dark green. So that should help with the um, limiting its um, you know, visibility. Uh, and as I mentioned, you know, the, that graffiti coating is really important to us. And if we were to paint it green, I'm afraid it would just become a canvas for, for graffiti. So um, we're kind of stuck with the, the dark gray color for the actual unit.
Great. All right, any final questions Commissioners? All right, I think we'll move to close our hearing and begin our discussion. If you can all unmute and Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so we are um, looking at this um and, and this is an application for a binding report from us. Um, however, as it's a prototype for a citywide installation, the Public Design Commission has binding jurisdiction on the design of the uh, unit. And so uh, we are really binding on location and that's what we're going to be focusing our discussion on today. So it, it's the location at this corner of the park um, with the uh, slight expansion in the paving to provide a flat surface for the installation. And we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Thank you Sarah. Um, I Let me get, uh, this is, I think this is a great uh, you know, thing to try. Um, it, the experiences I said in Portland has been very good. And a lot of other uh, prototypes have not been very successful for a variety of reasons. Um, I go back in this uh, back to Parks history, uh, Bronson Binger was head of Capitol Projects. And I don't know, the eighties I guess. Anyway, used to carry around a model comfort station because comfort stations are so important uh, to the uh, to New York City and to the Parks Department. And as, as we all know, there are very few public uh, restrooms available uh, around the city. So if the, I think this would be terrific if it works. There, I was involved in uh, later on when Deco proposed a self-cleaning uh, comfort station, which Bloomberg finally approved in uh, two thousand and six. And I understand those are still in storage and may or may not, you know, there were there are a variety of issues about those particular ones. So I'm very happy to see them trying this experiment. Uh, because the cost of these facilities uh, in general has risen astronomically. The large brick buildings that are constructed uh, to serve as restrooms around the city. And I'm hopeful that this may, this may work. Uh, so I'm excited about it and I think that the location is fine. And uh, I think that the, the color is acceptable. It'll, it's, it'll blend in, you know, as it, as well as uh, anything can short of the dark green. And the graffiti issue is such a major issue in public parks that, that I'm okay with the color. So I, I can approve this as presented.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Goldblum.
Me too. I think this is appropriate as presented. I'm fascinated by this. I, I can't, I think there's nothing from a landmarks perspective that's inappropriate about it, although I have so many questions, factually speaking. I mean, what happens when it's cold out? Gosh, you know, you, you have a heated seat or something. I mean, uh, plus if someone's not feeling so well, acoustics are, there are no acoustics. I, I, I'm just curious as to what happens with these things. But I think it's a, it's basically having a stall outside. It's not really a bathroom building. It's like having a bathroom stall. It's almost like a porta potty. But it's kind of cool and it, you know, the, the whole trope of, of million-dollar bathrooms in city parks is such a bad look for the city and hasn't served us very well. So I think that anything that is more affordable, faster uh, is, is better. We, we, people definitely need these, so uh, I hope it works and I certainly wouldn't uh, wouldn't have any concerns about it from landmarks perspective.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
So I agree that I think it's appropriate. Thank you Diana for always providing incredibly deep knowledge about the parks and everything that's going on and letting us know that this is a prototype in Portland that has worked is uh, it's always reassuring. And Michael, your perspective is. Right. Um, I do want to say, I agree that the design is simple. The footprint is not large. It's not competing with anything in the landscape. This is a winter, this is a photo in the winter, so there are trees here. It won't be sicking out in the spring like a sore thumb. Thank you so much for using a uh, a paint that will uh, not uh, that will keep the graffiti off of it. Because the graffiti is not only ugly and defacing, it's also a deterrent to use. I mean, it automatically says, I don't know if I want to go here. Um, and I, I hope it's maintained as well as possible. And I can approve this.
All right, great. Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, great comments. Uh, yeah, so I, I uh, I commend the effort because the city is renowned for a little lack of such a facility. And uh, I think it's worth giving a try and uh, I, I, I think it, it, it is appropriate.
All right, great. Commissioner Jefferson?
I think it's appropriate.
And Commissioner Chu?
I think it's great. We need so many restrooms in public parks, so uh, appropriate.
Okay, great. All right, so I think we all agree on this and I want to thank the Parks Department for the clear presentation and wish you the best of luck with this. Commissioner Chapin, would you make the motion?
Sure, thank you Sarah. In a matter of a binding report, Borough of Bronx, LPC twenty-three zero seven zero 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 nine, Joyce Kilmer Park. Grand Court, Concourse Historic District, a park established in about nineteen twenty-six. Application is to install a freestanding restroom enclosure prototype and a mechanical cabinet. And alter paving. I recommend that the commission uh, issue a positive report, finding that the placement of the enclosure and cabinets will not eliminate or damage any significant historic or architectural features of the park. That the installations will be located away from the monuments and other design focal points of the park. That given their size, neutral color and design, the installations will not disrupt any prominent vistas and will have a subordinate presence. That the cabinets will be set within landscaping, away from the pathways and screened by plantings, helping them receive from view. That the small amount of proposed paving will provide a level base for the enclosure and will be well scaled to the structure. And will be consistent with other paving extensions at pathways in terms of placement, materials, details and finish. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the park, streetscape or the Grand Court Concourse Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote? John, will you call the vote?
No, we can't hear you, John.
All right, well, I could do it. I'll do it. Um, Commissioner Chen?
I.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
And actually, Cory, can you just call it for me? I think I can't call it for myself.
Chair Carol?
Aye. All right, so with seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes and this is approved and we'll move to the next item.
Okay, the next item is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-three dash zero four eight seven five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, block twenty-five sixty-three, lot five. One thirty-six Franklin Street in the Greenpoint Historic District. This is an Italianate-style row house with a commercial ground floor built in eighteen fifty-five and the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Okay Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. John, I'm going to give you control of the presentation. You can just click on your screen. Great, um, you can advance the slides using your arrow key, so your mouse, please state your name for the record, you may be.
Hi Commissioners, this is John Vedar from Kushner Studios, uh, here to present one thirty-six Franklin Street in Brooklyn in the Greenpoint Historic District. We are looking to do a one-story addition at the back of the building for the commercial space. Um, our first slide is just to give you some context of, in the block context, including the buildings that have already been called built. Slide, and these are just some historic photos. Um, separately, we're already working on, you know, basically we're converting the first floor from commercial to residential. We have a separate approval for restoring the nineteen forties storefronts. And then we come to the view on Milton Street, uh, where is, where you can see the addition. Gives you the view from August of last year. The middle photo was the view as of um, December of last year. And then completely opposite side of the block on Greenpoint Avenue where it has no visibility. Then this is our photo montage with the views from Milton Street, just to kind of further explain because there are a few different things going on. Um, in this view, there is this white structure at one thirty Franklin Street that actually is in violation currently, um, but blocks the view of our addition. A wood bucket is also an eight-foot fence at one thirty Franklin Street that also is in violation because it's two feet higher than it should be. The photo on the right is what the view would be uh, with those violating conditions removed. As you can see, there's a side view of the addition and the uh, guardrail on top of the addition. The goal is to um, have a stucco color on the addition that matches the surrounding red brick. And then to have the guardrail painted a similar black color and style as the fire escapes and fire balconies that we see on the rear of the buildings. Next photo is a larger view of that photo montage and a larger photo of this spec of the color that we're proposing to use. Again, the goal is to blend in with the rear of the surrounding buildings to ensure minimal uh, disruption of the view um, from Milton Street as it's not view, viewable from anywhere else. And then these are some photos of the mock-up. Uh, again, right now as of, with this white structure in the backyard of one thirty Franklin Street. You can't see it, but obviously we know that is in violation. These are some current photos of the backyard at one thirty-six Franklin Street and a picture looking at the rear elevation of the existing building. This is again a drawing of the rear elevation of one thirty-six Franklin Street. Just giving some context of some other buildings in the block, you know, along with Franklin Street. And then these are drawings illustrating the existing condition of the first floor and second floor where we're proposing a new window into a door to give access to the resident, residential unit on the second floor um, to terrace above the first floor addition. And then we have the proposed condition of that one-story addition. And then what it looks like on the first floor, my second floor rather, which becomes a terrace for the second floor unit. And then we have the rear elevation um, showing the few differences. Between the one-story addition with the stucco finish and the guardrail. Then we'll have a door from the apartment here that will be the same white painted finish as the facade is currently. And obviously, we talked about the guardrail will be painted black and simplistic to mimic the uh, fire escapes and kind of blend in um, with the rest of them. This is an elevation of uh, the side facade that has minimal view from Milton Street. And then finally, just we have a section showing the existing condition versus the proposed condition of the one-story addition. Uh, and with that, that is uh, the end of our presentation. Thank you for uh, listening.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Alright, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And uh, I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to take us through the testimony if there is any.
Uh, thank you Chair Carroll. Uh, we did not receive any signups beforehand for this item. And I'm looking through our attendees list and I do not see any hands raised. I'll give it one more moment. No hands raised. So I will just note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board One recommends approval on this item and I'll bring it back to you Chair Carroll.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, so we didn't have any comments and so I'll just ask the Commissioners again if you have any final questions. Alright, and just one last, uh, I'm gonna ask applicants if there's any final statement or comment you want to make before we close the hearing and begin our discussion.
I would just say that we're, we're the, we're trying to create a addition that blends in with the surroundings and has a very minimal uh, view from Milton Street, um, from Milton Street.
Okay, right, thank you. Okay, so Commissioners, I think we'll move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So most.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that?
Oh, second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so this is for a full lot, one-story rear yard extension, um, on uh, at this building at one thirty-six Franklin. And this is, um, and we've seen lots of cases where the, um, avenue building has a one-story, uh, commercial extension that is minimally visible through the, um, the gap in the street wall around the corner and as this one is. And so if we just uh, imagine the two, the uh, fixtures that are in, uh, were installed without permits, we look at this view, this has been photoshopped out and see how much of this addition we see. And it's in the context of other rear yard additions. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one? Oh, you're muted still.
Thank you to the applicant for photoshopping that horrible addition out, but I think this is very appropriate. Um, as you said, it's uh, and as has been presented, it's minimally visible and the applicant has done a good job of using materials that uh, help that make that happen. Uh, you know, the uh, red colored stucco that blends with the surroundings and also the uh, the railing that uh, is, you know, makes it less visible and uh, and more porous. I can approve it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I can approve this.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, if it, given what it's, you know, the use and the commercial nature and of this particular, uh, this particular case, I can approve this.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
Appropriate.
And Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Okay, that actually could have been the vote. Simple to the point.
I got distracted, yeah.
Alright, Commissioner, I'm sorry, uh, um, I think we all are prepared to vote to approve this. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you make the motion?
Sure. Um, in the matter of DACA twenty-three dash zero four eight seven five, one thirty-six Franklin Street, Greenpoint Historic District, an Italianate-style rowhouse with a commercial ground floor built in eighteen fifty-five. The application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenpoint Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the construction of the proposed one-story story rear yard addition will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the addition will only be partially visible through a gap in the street wall on Milton Street through layers of fencing and other rear yard impersions and the reddish brown uh, stucco of the visible sidewall and simple metal guardrail will blend with the background and will not pull undue attention to itself, that the addition will be located at the end of the block in an area where there are other full lot coverage rear rear additions and that the presence of an addition of this length and height will not diminish the block's central green space, that the work will not detract from the special architectural or story character of the building or of the historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
Alright, and John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Alright, that's approved, thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number four, LPC twenty-three dash zero one one two eight. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, block sixteen eighty-six, lot two, four oh seven Stuyvesant Avenue in the Bedford-Stuyvesant Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. This is a Romanesque Revival-style rowhouse designed by R. Sweet and built in eighteen ninety-two and the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Jackie, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Hello Commissioners and Landmark staff, thank you for hearing this application today. My name is Jackie Pudu Valen of JPD Preservation Consulting. This is four oh seven Stuyvesant Avenue, a proposal to construct a one-story rear addition with a patio and railing on top and a metal stair going down into the rear yard. I'm here today with Denise Lee of Denise Lee Architect and the owners of the house who also reside there. Here you see the front facade of the house on the left, the existing condition of the rear facade at center and the proposed one-story addition on the right. Four oh seven Stuyvesant is a rowhouse on the east side of the avenue between Chauncey and Bainbridge Streets in the Bedford-Stuyvesant Historic District. The house is part of a row that extends from four oh nine, the, uh, at the corner of Chauncey Street to four oh one. Four oh seven is the second building in from the corner with Chauncey Street. As you can see illustrated on this block plan, so its rear is visible from Chauncey Street uh, through a gap in the, in the street wall on Chauncey. Four oh seven is uh, the shaded building on the plan. On the right is the subsequent view of the rear of the house and the other houses in the row uh, from Chauncey Street. And you'll note, um, uh, you'll also note that visible at other rear yards in this, uh, in this view is the existing half with one-story addition at the back of four oh nine, which I'm highlighting here with my cursor if you can see that. And the one-story, um, the one-story addition at, um, wait a second. Right, the one-story addition at four oh nine, the existing half with rear addition at the end deck at a four oh one Stuyvesant, all the way at the other end of the row, sorry. Here on the left is, uh, the view of the rear of four oh seven taken from the back of its rear yard. You can see in this photo the existing additions at the rear of four oh seven, four oh nine and four oh five. In the middle photo, which is taken looking, um, which is taken looking north from the, from the rear, um, of the, from the rear yard of four oh seven, you can see a portion of the rear addition at four oh seven as well as the metal deck and stair. Um, that's under construction at four oh three and the wood deck at four oh one. Go to the next slide, okay. And here on the left is a photo of the rear yard of four oh seven taken from the back of the house. Um, and another view looking, um, looking to the backyard, uh, which ends with the lot line wall of a house that faces Chauncey Street. And just to show you more clearly what's on the rears of the other houses in the row looking north, on the left is a photo of the roof of the addition at four oh five. The deck and stair under construction at four oh three, I'll explain that in more detail later, that's LPC approved. And the addition and, and deck with stair at four oh one, which you see here on the end. The deck and stair under construction at four oh one received a staff-level approval last year. The other two photos are to help show the existing conditions within the interior, interior of the block. Um, however, because of the large evergreen trees and bushes, uh, these, these views are pretty obscured. Here are just some historic images of the front of the house over time. On the left is the house in the nineteen forties, the middle is the nineteen eighties, and at right is the designation photo. Historically, there's always been a view into the rear yards from the houses uh, facing, into the rear yards of the houses facing onto Stuyvesant Avenue from Chauncey Street. That gap has always been there. On the left and middle are nineteen forties photos showing the open picket fence that was once at the rear, the, the rear of the garden of number four oh nine, uh, Stuyvesant. And on the right, again, is the current view looking into the block. Uh, I'm sorry, in the middle is, um, the view looking into the block from Chauncey. Now, this particular block has never been a homogeneous rowhouse block. Um, as these maps show, in, uh, in nineteen oh eight, the block was a mixture of freestanding houses, speculative rowhouses, um, like, uh, four oh seven, like four oh seven Stuyvesant's row was a speculative rowhouse, uh, row. Um, and also a church was present. By the nineteen thirties, the block was fully developed, now with a large school and rectory associated with the church. You'll note that also by the nineteen thirties, a small, the small rear additions appeared at the rear of the houses in four oh seven's row. They were most likely bathrooms when indoor plumbing became introduced, became into use. Um, you'll also note that the other houses facing on the Stuyvesant appear on this map and they were built with very long L extensions. And by that, I mean here are the, the north end of Stuyvesant, um, near Bainbridge. Here's the existing block plan, which shows that they are now full with one-story additions at the rears of seven houses on Bainbridge and at the rear of one house on Chauncey Street. Of the houses on Stuyvesant Avenue, the road to the north has seen alterations to its rear additions where one has grown in height, uh, to two stories and another has grown in height to four stories. Of the houses within four oh seven's row, this, this plan also shows the deck and stair under construction at four oh three and the addition with a deck and stair at four oh one. And here's the proposed rear addition, deck and stair indicated at four oh seven. Here on the left is an elevation drawing of the existing rear or, uh, or east elevation. In the middle is the proposed east elevation showing the one-story addition with deck and stair and the one window opening that would be altered by dropping the sill to accommodate a door to access the roof from the first floor. And on the right is the proposed north elevation, so, uh, viewing the addition from the side. Here's the proposed addition shown in plan. The existent, existing masonry wall at the basement floor will be retained and the existing window openings will be modified in order to access the addition. Here's the, uh, proposed first floor um, or parlor floor plan. This shows the proposed deck atop the addition and its stair accessing the rear yard. Here are the existing and proposed building sections. And here's an enlarged section through the proposed addition, which is to be constructed on a, uh, concrete slab with footings. And the, um, proposed finish for the addition is a beige brick uh, to be in keeping with the appearance of the, the other, um, the beige look that's on the rears of these houses currently. Um, and also have a, a dark bronze finish at the windows and doors and a black painted thin picket rail fence. Here's an elevation drawing, uh, showing the proposed addition in context with the rest of the houses in the row. You can see the existing additions at four oh nine, four, oops. I don't know, one more page. You know what? This is not the most up-to-date presentation. Sorry, we're missing a slide. Um, okay, um. It, unfortunately, what I, uh, meant to show you is that there's also the addition at four oh three that would be visible, uh, you know, to the right of this image. Um, there's, uh, there's the deck, deck under construction at four oh three and the, the deck with stair at four oh one. So, um, so now we're looking at the, uh, rendered views. Um, this is the, uh, this is, this is really unfortunate. This is not the, uh, the last version of the presentation we sent to you because, um, we did these renderings using winter views that just more clearly showed everything in the backyard without the, the foliage there. I don't suppose there'd be a way to load that up quickly or could I share my screen? No?
No, unfortunately, can't.
Okay, so what we're showing you here is, um, a rendering on the right of the, um, of the proposed addition. And what you'd really see from that gap in the street wall from Chauncey is a bit of the, the beige brick of the addition and the thin pick, the, the thin, uh, metal rail fence on top of it, fence railing on top of it. And here's another rendered view, um, which is taken from walking a bit east on Chauncey, which incidentally, um, you know, again, really the bulk of what you'd see of this addition is this very thin fence. And, um, and you'd also be seeing it in conjunction with the, the, uh, deck and stair that's currently under construction at number four oh three. And also, you know, if, if this was the winter view, you'd also be able to see the, the deck and stair that's at four oh one, uh, obscured by this bit of branch over here. Um, now just for a bit of context, we found that it's a typical condition within this district to have these gaps within the street wall behind houses that face um, uh, onto the avenue when going down the side streets. So here we're looking at, um, the, uh, kind of going from the, um, the intersection at Bainbridge, which is just to the north from this house, looking at the rears of houses that face onto, onto Stuyvesant. And what you see is, um, additions of various sizes, volumes, eras, periods, um, that were, you know, constructed over time on the backs of these houses and are all visible because it was typical in this district to, um, to build these houses so that you had a gap, a gap in the street wall between the houses that faced onto the avenue and the houses that faced onto the side streets. And, uh, to conclude, um, I just want to say I think that, uh, well, we think that this proposed addition is modest in scale. It doesn't overwhelm the, the size of this four-story house, obviously, because of, it's, because it's only one story. It really allows you to maintain the view of the upper three stories of all of these houses in the row. So the, that contiguous appearance of the three houses in the row is maintained. So that relationship of this house to the other houses in the row is maintained. Um, and the addition itself is minimally visible. And, uh, really, again, what would be most visible on it is the railing on top, which will be, uh, viewed in conjunction with another deck being built at another house nearby. And, um, you know, why don't I just go back to that plan? Right, so the railing's gonna be visible in conjunction with the deck that's under construction at four oh three and the existing, um, deck on top of an existing addition on top of number four oh one. And we thank you for your time. And welcome, welcome any comments and questions.
Great, thank you. Alright, Commissioners, do we have any questions? Alright, I don't see any questions at this time, so let's move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it to Gregory Kala to take us through the testimony.
Thank you Chair Carroll. We received a couple of signups beforehand, so we'll be hearing from them first. The first signup we'll be hearing from is Lucy Levine from the Historic District's Council. So Lucy Levine, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HGC generally supports this proposal and finds the massing of the addition to be appropriate. We think, however, the architect should continue to study the proposed fenestration and articulation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Uh, next up, we will be hearing from Evelyn Collier. So Evelyn Collier, I'll be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Morning, commissioners, Commissioner Carroll and commissioners. I'm Evelyn Collier, uh, representing Community Board Three. Um, this is an objection to the certificate of appropriateness for four oh seven Stuyvesant Avenue. Um, the application is to alter an enlarged residential building built in eighteen ninety-two. With a one story fifteen foot deep rear yard extension to include a deck above and metal stair landing. Down to the garden situated in the Stuyvesant Heights Historic District designated in nineteen seventy-one. The proposed project was presented for a review hearing at a regular scheduled CB three meeting. Uh, Landmarks and Preservation Committee meeting on Monday, February thirteenth. By Webex, and then the committee further had a discussion of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. The project was presented by Architect Jacqueline Perdue Valian of JDP Preservation Consultant New York City. And Moshi Tischler and Maya Perez of the High Rise Group, who represented the owner. The presentation included tax photos, satellite images, views of adjacent properties. Details of the historical and existing condition. Built by R Suite four oh seven. Stuyvesant Avenue is a three story neo-classical Romanesque revival style building. And is well preserved Stuyvesant Heights brownstone in. All its grandeur, grace and glamour as recently described by the brownstone, brownstone is blocked. The backyard was described as tranquil and private. It also happened to be the first home of baseball great Jackie Robinson upon joining the Brooklyn Dodgers. The committee comments, the rear yard addition is visible from Chauncey Street and is much deeper and wider than the other extension of the block. Black metal deck railings on the top of the proposed rear yard addition would be highly visible from Chauncey Street and adjacent building. The proposed parlor. Uh, level door, deck and railings are not typical in the line of brownstone homes where the extension are one story which with no deck above. Windows of the extension at ground level are not in alignment with windows above. The brick does not match the existing facade, which currently has painted. Has paint, sorry. The brick does not match the existing facade which currently has painted red that the, there. Appears to be more than twelve steps to the proposed deck, which would require a landing. The proposed rear yard extension with parlor level depth will significantly impact. The district form and character and will disrupt the backyard experience of the neighbors. Therefore, we do consider. With due consideration to committee comments, Brooklyn Community Board Three objects to the certificate of appropriateness for. Four oh seven Stuyvesant Avenue, Brooklyn, New York. Committee voted eight in favor, uh, zero against. And the full board voted thirty-one in favor, zero against, no extension. Thank you, Anthony Buser, Director Chair, and Evelyn Collier, Chair of Landmark and Preservation Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, uh, I was informed that there is somebody in uh, LPC office, Mr. Sam Messner. Yeah, I see his hand raised now. So Sam Messer, I will be promoting you to panelist now. So if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for this opportunity. So I just want to follow up and I'm glad of the recommendation not to approve this. I'll just go through this quickly. The historic preservation aspect, I think, has already been discussed. I would like to say that. Their architect consistently doesn't mention that at four oh one that. Those buildings that extend to the full property were built before the Landmarks Commission is nineteen seventy-one or two. Um, the other issues that I had were the privacy. If this was allowed, this would be the first addition that went the entire width of the building. All the others. At four oh nine, that's on the corner, the only addition that is there is the old coal shed. And the other structure that they keep saying is an addition is actually a temporary addition that's really fabric. Um, and so if this was also allowed to be built the entire width. It it raises both our privacy issues where anyone on those decks will be able to see into our bedroom, bathroom, all of the windows. And the stairs going down would make it even more ex- extraordinary. The deck at four oh three was originally proposed much deeper into the yard. They put up a, a temporary. Wooden structure which clearly was not approved and our neighbors at four oh three at the time. Actually, it's four oh seven, um, tried to, you know, make sure that the landmark saw that. So now this other addition that's to me most troubling is a security issue, which is if you allow the first. With, you know, full width extension. Eventually, one will be put at four oh nine on Chauncey. That is sadly a violent street. Last summer, as our neighbors who were trying for this petition had to let access to the police because someone tossed the gun in there after. Attempting a murder on Chauncey. This would allow access to walking down the entire, starting to walking down the entire back windows of the block. So for those three reasons, I hope that you deny it. Also, I'd just like to say that. The resident, they, they have purchased the building at four oh seven, but they do not currently reside there. I mean, to my knowledge, uh, they're not there yet. So I I would just hope that they also would spend some time in living in there as well. But I strongly appreciate your, I hope you approve, don't approve this, and I strongly appreciate your time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I am looking through the attendees list now to see if there are any further hands raised. I do not see any. So I will just note for the record that we received two additional uh, written testimony from individuals recommending approval. And I will bring that back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you very much, Gregory. All right, I'd like to turn it back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the uh, testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. I appreciate it. Um, first off, to address the comments by Ms. Collier and Community Board Three. Uh, we really appreciate the time that they gave us presenting uh, to them last month. Unfortunately, I think that they confuse some aspects of this. Uh, proposal with another proposal that I presented on the same night. So they, as unfortunately, that her, uh, their resolution had misstated. The the name of the architect, for instance. Um, also. There was a mention about a landing being necessary with the deck stair. Um, I I don't, uh, maybe the, maybe the architect who's named Denise Lee. Uh, maybe she can speak to that, but I I don't understand how a landing would be necessary with the stair going to a deck. Um, and you know, I personally find it unfortunate that the community board um, objects to this because in our view. As I said before, we think that this is a modest addition that has precedent within. The district for visible additions of various scales being visible through street wall gaps on side streets. Um, and that there are uh, precedents within this block for one story full with rear additions, as I noted the. The um, full width additions that are uh, uh, present on either side of um, of this block facing on a Bainbridge, uh, to Chauncey. Um. Also, one other thing, I, you know, I, I'm personally fascinated by the fact that uh, that there's a little bit of of Jackie Robinson history with this house. But it's um, it's unfortunately not correct that he moved to this house or lived there for very much longer than a few months. Uh, from what I've read, it looks like he was living there for a few months when he first came to Brooklyn. And then he quickly moved to five twenty-six McDonough Street, later moved to five oh six McDonough Street. By nineteen forty-seven, he was living at uh, the McAlpin Hotel back in Manhattan. And then when he actually joined the Dodgers, which was nineteen forty-seven, he was living at fifty-two twenty-four Tilden Avenue. Which is a, a national register uh, listed house because Jackie Robinson did live there while he was uh, with the Dodgers and. Putting up big numbers for the Dodgers. Um, and then, of course, after that, he, he um, lived in Artsley Park, Addisley Park. For a number of years, starting in nineteen forty-nine. And then, you know, later moved out of the city of Connecticut. But in any case, um, you know, we, we wish that the community board. Uh, had liked this addition because um, I think the architects and the owners who do live in the house and do plan to continue living in the house. Um, and really love this neighborhood, uh, they thought that they were uh. Designing something that was respectful to this row of buildings. Uh, regarding the testimony you just heard from the neighbor who lives at four oh five. Um, you know, unfortunately, I I think the commission sees this all the time, that neighbors. Uh, testify against uh, additions being put up. At a neighboring building because they have concerns about people being able to see into their windows or. Uh, you know, other concerns that, you know, they just don't want the construction next door to them. But, you know, this is New York City and we all have to live very close to each other and we also, we have to make accommodations for one another. Um, you know, and I know I don't have to remind commissioners that uh, concerns like that from a neighbor, what's visible from their. Private backyard is not something that the, the commission can regulate. Um, in response to his other concerns. You know, safety concerns, it, these houses already have basement level windows and doors, so uh, I don't see how. Adding an addition onto this house makes the house any, any less safe. Than uh, the fact, the the presence of the existing openings at the backs of these houses. Um. I think other than that, I'd like to ask um, the architect Denise Lee, if she'd like to make any comments. No, maybe she's not unmuting.
I don't have any comments to add. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, commissioners.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, not seeing any questions, I'm gonna suggest we move to our discussion. So um, if you can all unmute yourself, send your requests. And Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. Um, and um, as. The applicant stated, the commission's purview is really limited to the architectural. Features and and impact. Uh, we, while sympathetic. Uh, to people's, you know, other quality of life concerns. We cannot uh, regulate light air, privacy, noise, construction or security. Uh, although we do allow for the installation of security cameras and lights and fixtures to address security. Um, but we can't uh, consider, we can't um, factor in um, these issues when evaluating the appropriateness of. An addition, what we look at is the scale of the addition to. Uh, uh, compared to the. Or the, the effect of the scale of the addition on the house to which it's being added. And uh, it's a, this effect of the scale on the adjacent buildings. The effect of the scale of the addition on the central green space. And then uh, the visibility and to the extent that an addition is visible, what it is that you see from the street and is that. In contextual or um, does it not detract from? Uh, or does it detract from any significant features? So in this case, we have a proposal for a one story rear yard addition. Uh, which does not uh, obscure the planer quality of the upper floors of the rear facade, which is visible over the wall. And um, it is similar in height to other incursions in the rear yard. Um, it does have a fence on top of it. And it does project a little bit further into the rear yard than other additions. Um, but it does not uh, diminish or uh, eliminate the presence of the rear yard. And um, and its visibility is quite similar to the addition that we just approved. Um, in the previous application. So um, we'll have a discussion about. Sort of the height, scale, massing and materiality and visibility of this addition. Commissioner Chu, would you be comfortable starting this one?
Sure. Um, I think that the. Uh, single story addition to the rear um, is, is relatively discreet. Um, and from the view vantage point shown, um, I feel like it's appropriate. I think that the railing is somewhat transparent. And that the brick material, which I couldn't quite see the color, how it matched the facade. Seemed in keeping, but that's something I think that we should just uh, finalize and make sure staff follows up on the actual brick choice.
Yeah, okay.
But I think that it's relatively simple and uh, not that large. Uh, not, not really visible from this side street view and uh, that it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I agree with Commissioner Chu's remarks and I can support this as presented.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, yes, I, I, when I saw this the first time, I said, a room that's fifteen by nineteen, it's a large room. But then looking at it again, I thought it was fine. I can approve that. And the, the, I was concerned about the color of the brick in the cellar level. But I'm not quite sure if it's red or, there was another drawing. Another picture that showed it as red and the top is white. But I can approve that or the staff can deal with that.
Okay.
The plate glass is acceptable to me. I'm surprised they use plate glass, but it's acceptable to me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
I think it's uh, actually overall very modest in size. And not dissimilar to uh, things we have approved, including just approved, and I think the, the visibility is minimal.
Okay, Commissioner Chen? Where's, oh, he's, I think he had to leave. Okay, uh, Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. I mean, it, it's most similar to the retail extensions that we often see on, on blocks of this nature. That we approve on a regular basis, but I think even the fact that it's not, not used, it is appropriate from a volumetric perspective and. Uh, I have no problem with it.
Okay, thanks. And um, I think it, you know, it's not a full lot, which usually the, the commercial ones are. So it does still retain a rear yard, which I think is important in the block.
That's true, too.
Okay, great. So I think we can move to approve this and we'll uh, ask that the applicant work with the staff on the, to review the final color sample. Commissioner Chu, would you be comfortable reading the motion?
Oh, sorry, yes. Okay, um, in the case of LPC twenty-three zero one one two eight. Four oh seven Stuyvesant Avenue, Bed-Stuy Expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. Where a Romanesque revival style rowhouse designed by R Sweet. And built in eighteen ninety-two, the application is to construct a rear yard addition. Um, I find that the, that this is appropriate proposal. Um, and that we find uh, this approval, uh, I'm sorry. This is proof finding that the work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features of the building. That the simple design and materiality of the proposed one story. Rear addition featuring brick cladding and punched window and door openings will harmonize the historic district. That the addition will only be visible through a gap in the street. Uh, while on Chauncey, Chauncey Street seen in the context of fencing and other rear yard incurred incursions and will not. Call undue attention to itself. That the other rear yard additions of similar height and depth exist within the block and that the proposed one. Story rear yard addition will be modest in scale and will not overwhelm the building, adjacent buildings. Or the block's green, uh, central green space. And that the work will not diminish the specialist architectural and historic character of the Bed-Stuy Expanded. Stuyvesant Heights Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Okay.
Thank you. And uh, John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Uh, six in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, so that's approved.
Commissioners.
Yeah, and please do work with the staff on the final review and approval of the color of the brick.
Of course. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number five, LPC twenty-three dash zero three five six three. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn. Block ten seventy-five, lot thirteen, two eighty Garfield Place in the Parks of Historic District. This is a row house built in nineteen ten and the application is to remove bay windows, construct a rear yard addition.
Good commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing and they now have control of the presentation. Uh, Jeff, if you'll just state your name for the record, you may begin.
Sure. Hi, my name is Jeff Edlemacki, uh, Principal of Edlemacki Architecture, excuse me. And I am representing the homeowner for this application. Uh we are working together on our renovation of a property, Row House at two eighty Garfield Place, uh which is located in the Park Slope Historic District. We are proposing modifications to the rear facade of the building, including a rear a one-story addition on top of an existing extension, the removal of a historic bay window, among other work. The property is located on Garfield Place between Eighth Avenue and Prospect Park West, on the south side of the street, indicated in the top right. The block is composed of four and five-story row houses uh with taller residential and non-residential buildings bookending the block on either end. The majority of the row houses on the block have rear extensions, uh most of which are two-story and a handful which are three. Which are indicate, the two-story extensions are indicated in yellow, the three-story in green. Two properties in the immediate vicinity have rooftop additions as well, which are indicated in purple. Uh the, including the property immediately adjacent to two eighty Garfield, the two eighty-two. Two eighty Garfield is in the middle of three nearly identical buildings in sequence, the first residential buildings on the block from Eighth Avenue. Those three buildings shown here, two seventy-eight, two eighty, and two eighty-two are nearly identical, as I mentioned, including the bow window on the front facade, a rear extension, and in an original bay window. Those all appear in the original Sanborn map, or at least the first Sanborn map on which they appear in nineteen-twenty-six, uh giving us confidence that these are all original features. The one difference between the three is that two eighty is actually on the rear, a mirror image of the other two with the extension on the right side instead of the left, and the the bay window also being flipped to the left. We are proposing uh on the left to remove three uh architectural features, including a stair to the yard, a non-historical contemporary bay window on the corner, and the original bay window I noted on the previous slide. In its place, or in the place of those, we are proposing to add a uh one-story addition to the second floor within the setback requirement, modify an existing opening on the second floor, add two flat or box bay windows to the extension and relocate our yard access to the corner of the L. So those proposed, excuse me, those proposed changes, uh in particular the removal of the bay window uh are related to some design issues that we're considering inside and out, um which I I understand are outside of your purview, but I did want to uh include some context. The one reason for relocating the stairs is that uh the extension is quite close to the rear lot line, and the stair protruding into that space limits an already limited amount of usable yard area. The uh second reason for relocating the stairs is that given some of the interior changes, it no longer makes sense in its current location, and moving it to the inside of the L is a more more functional location for us. So we acknowledge that this could be accomplished with the bay window left in place, and I just want to note that in general, uh inside and out, we are are uh taking as respectful approach as possible with respect to retaining a lot of the interior details and molding. Um but in this case, we feel like the uh removal of the bay window uh is uh a more respectful treatment than trying to build around it or pretend as if it's not not there at all um by by running the deck into that window. Here are photos of the existing building and neighboring buildings. Uh on the top, the second story, uh to the left is two seventy Garfield, two eighty in the center, two eighty-two to the right, and you can see here the relationship of the the bay windows. Uh at two eighty-two, it's slightly higher as the cornice line because the, as the buildings progress up the slope, all of the elements are are moved up. Below are the uh photos of the rear yard and extension at two eighty, including that contemporary bay window, which we are proposing to remove the stair, the historic bay window beyond and uh views of the yard. We conducted probes on the bay window and found that the upper section was clad in sheet metal, painted sheet metal with no sheathing underneath. The lower section uh was clad in wood, which did not be appeared, excuse me, did not appear to be original. Uh in fact, it was MDF, which was not really an appropriate material for outdoor use, and uh there was evidence of water damage in that lower section. And uh this was conducted the day after a rain, and and it was in fact that material, including the framing material, was wet. So in any event, this would need to be re-clad and weatherproofed. The stained glass windows, the transoms, are in reasonable shape. The wood frames are in slight disrepair, but salvageable, and in fact, we do intend to salvage those uh transoms and reincorporate them into our proposed design, which I will uh get to later in the presentation. So this is a building section, excuse me, showing the relationship of the existing extension to the building and our proposed addition on top of the second floor, I'm sorry, at the second floor. And a large view of of the extension only. Um in addition to the relocation of the stair, there is an existing kind of excavated stair to the yard, just given the elevation of the yard relative to the interior floors. Um there, there's an excavated landing here to provide the clearance for the bay window, and we would uh be proposing to do something of the same for our new landing. Here is the existing elevation of two eighty in the center, uh in context with two seventy-eight on the left, two eighty-two on the right. Again, you can see the stepping of the the bay windows and the cornices. Um two eighty-two uh is also indicating a recently completed LPC-approved uh alteration, including modifications to the uh extension, enlarging the window, and a rooftop addition. This is the proposed rear elevation, showing the proposed addition and fenestration, changes to the fenestration on the extension at the rear facade, including enlarging, creating an enlarged enlarged opening for a uh bay window, uh flat bay window or box bay window. A lower window that aligns with that bay window and has a little uh short uh light well to allow us to increase the sill window size and lower the sill on the lower floor. Uh in place of the bay window is a fixed window, um our casement window is not a door. Um the only door access is from the side, which I'll show you in the next slides. And the other modification is to increase the opening size of an existing window on the second floor. And the room size here is two hundred and eighty-five square feet, and the window size is just over the required ten percent required for light and air, so it's about um thirty, thirty-point-one square feet uh against uh two hundred and eighty-five square feet of room area, so it uh meets the requirements with a little bit of spare. Here is the side elevation. Uh on the right is the existing uh showing the uh corners bay window that we're proposing to remove. And on the left, the proposed elevation showing the addition uh brick cladding the bay window on the side, which would incorporate the uh salvaged stained glass windows intact. Um we would proportion and size, excuse me, the windows to correspond to those transoms and and make them a feature. And then all of the brick infill would be painted to match what is currently there. The rear facade is currently painted. We would do the same on the the whole of the extension, including the new work with a breathable paint. And here are some three-dimensional views of the proposed work, including the bay windows, uh the material palette, again, primarily uh the painted brick with uh dark gray to black window cladding and window treatments, trim, and and detailing. So on the left is a view from the back, the rear yard from the corner, and then from the side, showing that, again, that bay window that incorporates the transoms. And a detail of that, showing how we would apply those pieces to our proposed bay window. And a new opening below to align with the the bay, bay window above. The floor plans uh from left to right, existing and proposed basement, existing and proposed first floor. We are not proposing to enlarge the footprint of the existing extension, other than the overhang on the bay windows, which is uh eight inches on the left and on the, excuse me, on the side, and six inches on the rear. The second floor plan, again, the ex, the extension, the extent of our addition is limited by the zoning setback of thirty feet, so that's, that is our, our determining line at the rear of that. The roof will just be roof, not any sort of occupied space uh roof deck or otherwise. And finally, these are photos from the uh, uh, excuse me, of the immediate context, including the Greenway and adjacent properties behind two eighty, showing some of the existing additions. This is another property at five-two-five First Street, which has a uh rooftop addition similar to what we are proposing, uh which was, again, also LPC-approved. There is a rooftop addition here, which I mentioned in the in the earlier slides. At the bottom are images of the uh adjacent, immediately adjacent neighbor at two eighty-two Garfield, again, showing recently completed work, uh including the rooftop addition, changes to the the fenestration on the rear of the extension, and the incorporation of the bay window into that design, which has the deck kind of wrapping around it. I think that uh concludes my introduction, so I welcome your questions and comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Alright, I don't see any questions. Oh yes, Commissioner Chu, please go ahead.
Oh. The question is, is how much of the rear uh renovation facade brick is new? Is it all being replaced with new brick?
Only, sorry, only, only, thank you for the question, only as needed. So there, there are currently two stories of brick construction, and we are proposing to close in some of those existing openings and enlarge or create new ones elsewhere. So we would only remove what is necessary, and ideally, we would salvage the brick that's there to to create a consistent texture.
I see. So that's your intent, is to salvage, because I can see that from your drawings, most of it is removals. In terms of your diagrams, what's coming out and what's what's the proposed? So you're gonna try to salvage the existing and and do the corner, which will be a new condition?
Yes. Yes, and not, not, not build from.
Not try to match new brick to existing color.
Correct, and it would be painted, so.
Oh, it's painted.
Color would be consistent, yes.
Oh, it's painted brick?
Yes.
Ah, I didn't catch that. And I'm sorry, is the painted brick the scope of the entire exterior back facade?
Yes.
Okay.
The existing rear facade is painted currently.
Okay.
The extension is not.
So you would be repainting the existing rear wall and then painting the extension to match it?
Yes. So here's this brick is not.
Uh huh. Okay, and 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 you're specifying a a certain kind of paint that can not seal moisture into the brick.
Correct.
It's dangerous of painting brick. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Chapin? You you have to unmute Commissioner Chapin.
Thank you. It appears that right now there are uh, well, there are three uh buildings in a row with the original um bay windows. Were, are there additional buildings that have these bays, or were the, just these three?
Uh you could see further down the block, there are bays on the side and on the rear of some of the extensions, but these, these three uh by all appearances seem to be you know, built at the same time or close to the same time, and by the same builder, architect.
And is, so, sorry, what is the extent of the row, just to follow up on this question? So the bays on the facade, rear facade exist on three of the buildings in this row, but do you know the, what the extent of your row is?
Well, I I think uh maybe not answering your exact question, but on on the you can see the uh one, two, three, four, the sixth house from the ends, um the end building has a different like a traditional bay rather than the bow. These two have a bow similar to two seventy-eight to two eighty-two, but the extension is not, not the same, not the same length or proportion. So that seems to be, sorry.
Got it, okay.
So these, these two are also four stories, and then we jump up to five, and these additions are uh also three stories. Um so there seems to be some some consistence, consistency within a narrow range of different types of extensions and and bay window attachments.
Okay.
The staff is reporting to me that it's really two seventy-eight, two eighty, and two eighty-two, so just the three that are actually in a row, and there are the three to the side of that that are similar, but.
Different row, different, okay, grouping.
Two to the, two to the left that have the bow window, and then we get into the not only the taller buildings, but also the the bay window instead of bow.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Alright, let's move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you, and we'll, as always, start with anyone who signed up in advance and then get to everyone else. So I'm gonna turn it over to Gregory Coller to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We received one sign up in advance for this item, so we'll be hearing from them first. That applicant is uh Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. So Lucy Levine, I'll be promoting you to panelist right now. And if you could please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC finds the redesign of the existing two-story rear addition appropriate and sensitive. We appreciate the reuse of the existing stained glass in the new bay window. That said, we object to the third-story rear yard addition and feel that such an addition might be better suited to the roof. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. I am looking through the attendees list right now, and I do not see any further hands raised. So I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six recommends approval, and I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'd like to uh turn to the applicant and ask you if you'd like to respond with the testimony.
Um I would only say that if this um works, this extension works better for us. I think it's more in proportion to the building to, if you look at the left slot, left image on this slide. It, I think there's a uh harmony in the massing that we wouldn't see with something added to the top. Um so um aside from our practical needs. practical needs as far as like the interior use, I think this is a a more appropriate design.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, do we have any final, yes, Commissioner Luffey, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, you may have answered this question, um, if it was asked. But what is the condition of the existing bay window?
Uh, there were, there was a picture of the probe and there there's definitely water damage at the bottom, uh, that would need to be replaced. It's actually, you can remove it with your fingers, um. And again, that was a day after a rainy day and there was, it was, it was the material was actually wet, including the framing inside. The, the, uh, vertical so, the vertical posts are clad in metal and the upper section is also clad in metal that we would probably want to replace if this were to remain. Um, it doesn't seem like it's um, the right practical solution or, or, um, I think we would probably want to incorporate the paneling detail similar to what's on the bottom.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any final questions? All right, we'll move to our discussions. So Commissioners, if you can all unmute yourself. We'll make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Um, well, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion, um, which uh, includes the addition on top of the extension, the, uh, ra- windows that, uh, the fenestration pattern, in particular the windows that wrap, uh, which is something that the commission has approved in the past. Um, and before we get to all of that, the first thing we need to discuss is the removal of the bay windows and the applicant has shown one is later and one is deteriorated, um, but they do exist at all three buildings in the group. So, um, we'll begin our discussion now. So start with, like, I think the removals and then, um, the design and fenestration pattern of the new, uh, work. Uh, Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Well, sure. Excuse me, um, I think the second floor, well, let me start with the removal. I think the his, removing the historic bay one is unacceptable to me because, just because it's historic fabric, the other three buildings have it, it's been there. Why remove it? And it doesn't affect the real addition, doesn't affect the addition on the second floor at all. The second floor addition, I can accept, um, and the windows, the, the, the design of the windows, they're quite handsome and I can accept that.
Okay. Commissioner Luffey?
Um, I think I agree with, uh, Commissioner Jefferson about, yeah, about the bay window. That, um, it should stay and I also agree about the windows and the rest of the mass thing.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. I think that the applicant, I mean, uh, just a little bit of context. We have in the past not infrequently requested that homeowners retain distinctive windows uh, like this, even on rear facades. Um, even when they are in less than pristine condition. I think the applicant could, uh, retain the bay window and improve it replacing the damaged parts, modifying the deck location, having it be, you know, fused with the deck, even modifying the trims that it was more consistent with the new box bay windows that he's doing elsewhere, which are quite lovely. I think that uh, the key is, as, as Everardo stated, this is a distinctive window, this is part of a, of a, 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 a group that is distinctive and I, I see no, and especially in this particular configuration where it's right across the property line from another one, I think it would be, uh, a, a loss of historic fabric that I would, uh, suggest would not be an appropriate loss.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I agree with, uh, previous Commissioners that everything else about this is fine, but we need to restore, uh, we retain, uh, restore or, you know, recreate that, uh, historic window and use as much of the original as we can.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Chu?
Um, I would agree with the other Commissioners' comments. I think that, um, as the applicant has shown, they've successfully been able to do the modern interpretation of the historic bay window and I think that retaining that would give the back facade actually a little bit more richness.
Okay, great. All right. So I think we can do a motion to approve this with the modification that they retain the existing uh, bay window on the rear facade. Commissioner Jefferson, would you be able to read the motion?
Sure. In a matter of LPC dash twenty-three dash zero three five six three to eighty Garfield Place, Park Slope Historic District. Application is to remove bay windows and constructive, oh, no, I'm sorry, uh, and construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building scale, material and details are mounted features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications. That the proposed work will not be visible from public thoroughfare, that the except, that except for the removal of the historic Oreo, O V L at the original rear facade, none of the proposed proposed elements. A proposal, my machine is not working here. Proposed work will eliminate or damage any significant architectural features. That the work will not affect the top floor of the rear facade, thereby helping to retain retain defining aspects of the building's original scale and massing, that the enlargement of the second floor windows openings would be compatible, comparatively scaled to the facade and maintain a typical amount of masonry framing at the edge of the facade. That the proposed addition addition's modest footprint, simple massing and typical cladding material, neutral finish, high solid to avoid ratio and punch masonry openings would be consistent with the secondary facade and extensions found at row houses within the block. That the construction of the proposed addition on top of the existing L will not exceed other other three-story rear yards addition in the row in terms of height. That the Oreo at the, at the L is not original unique finely crafted or part of a significant redesign of the building. Therefore, its removal will not detract from the building. And that the mountains at the infill will have the infill will have the infill to maintain a residential scale continued. However, I, I think the removal of the original Oreo, um, the retaining of the original Oreo should be part of this proposition.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Luffey, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luffey?
Aye.
Sticks in favor and not opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved, um, with the contingent, uh, condition that the bay window on the rear facade be retained and restored and incorporated into the uh, overall scope of work. So that concludes the morning session of our public hearing today. We're going to take a half hour lunch and we'll return at one twenty. We'll ask all members of the public to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time so that should you wish to return and rejoin the meeting, you don't have any technical difficulties. And we'll see everybody at one twenty. Thank you.